Yes, we're good.
Okay, thank you. So I'll let you know when it's seven o'clock Chair and then we'll get started.
Okay, I am ready.
It is now seven o'clock.
Okay, so you want me to go ahead and start?
Yes, please, you can go ahead and get started.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. This meeting of the Planning Commission of Monday, September 28th, is now called to order. This meeting is being conducted utilizing teleconferencing and electronic means consistent with the State of California Executive Order N dash 29 dash 20 dated March 17th, 2020 regarding the COVID-19 pandemic. The live stream of this meeting may be viewed on Comcast Xfinity Channel 15 and/or in line as noted in the agenda. In accordance with the executive order, the public may only view the meeting on television and/or online and not in the council chambers. We are conducting tonight's meeting in a virtual setting using Zoom. All planning commissioners and staff are participating from remote locations and all voting will be conducted by roll call vote. Mr. Paulson, would you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you Chair. So let the record reflect that all planning commissioners are in attendance.
Thank you very much. And next item on the agenda is normally the Pledge of Allegiance, but while we normally say the Pledge of Allegiance, that practice has been temporarily suspended due to the Zoom format of the meetings. And as the Planning Commission conducts this meeting on behalf of the Town Council and residents of Los Catos, we encourage active participation, which is essential for democracy and critical to the work of this planning commission. That participation can occur through, prior to a meeting, written comments about agenda items submitted to staff are always welcome and helpful. We do have a good number of written comments from the public that were submitted over the course of the last two meetings where we had to continue, as well as additional comments that came with our packet that was intended for last Wednesday's meeting and some addition, and there was a desk item as well for the meeting today. So we thank you all for your written comments. And there's also the opportunity to participate during our meeting. During verbal communications, an individual may speak on any topic that is not on the agenda. And during the hearing on a specific agenda item, any member of the public may speak about that item that is on the agenda. If you wish to address the commission tonight during the verbal communications or during the consideration of an agenda item, you need to join the Zoom webinar via the link and password provided on page two of the staff report. When I announce the item for which you wish to speak, click the raise hand feature in Zoom. And if you're participating by phone only, you press star nine on your telephone keypad. When called to speak, you may state your name and address for the record, or you may choose to not state your name and be anonymous. It is your choice. But in fairness to all who want to speak at the meeting, it is requested that you limit your comments to three minutes. And should you choose to state your name and address, please note that this meeting is recorded. So we have now come to the verbal communications portion of our meeting. Members of the public are invited to address the commission on any issue that is not on the agenda of tonight's meeting. Mr. Paulson, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak on items not on the agenda?
Thank you. I don't see any currently. If anyone wants to speak on an item not on the agenda, please use the raise hand feature now. I don't see anyone raising their hand Chair.
Okay, so we will move on to the next item on the agenda, and that is the consent calendar. We have one consent item to be acted upon with a single motion, and that is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting on September 9th, 2020. Any member of the commission or the public may choose to pull an item from the consent calendar for additional discussion later during the meeting. Is there any committee member or commission member or member of the public that wishes to pull an item from the consent calendar? Not seeing anyone. Hands raised. So seem done way I get it motion for approval of the consent calendar from the commission. Commissioner Barnett.
Yes, I'd be happy to move to approve the consent calendar.
And can I get a second? Commissioner Barnett, or Commissioner, but Dammy, thank you. Okay, is there any discussion or changes that any commission member wants to make to the meeting minutes before we take our vote? I'm not seeing anyone have any of those questions, so I will go ahead with the roll call vote. Commissioner Badami?
Yes.
Commissioner Birch?
Yes.
Commissioner Tavana?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudes?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnett?
Yes.
Vice Chair Janoff?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so it passes unanimously. So then we will move on to item two on the agenda, which is considering approval of a request for modification to an existing architecture and site application S dash 13 dash 090 to remove underground parking for construction of a commercial building known as the Market Hall in the North Forty specific plan area. APN 424 dash 56 dash 017, Architecture and Site Application S dash 20 dash 12. The property owner applicant is Summer Hill North Forty LLC. This item was continued for a second time from our last meeting on September 9th to allow commissioners and the public to review our town attorney's comments regarding the Housing Accountability Act and this application. It was also necessary to continue this from our scheduled meeting on September 23rd due to issues with Zoom and public access. So with that being said, I want to ask if we have any additional disclosures since our last meeting by commissioners for this application. Commissioner Birch?
I don't know if I disclose this again, but I will be recusing myself due to my residence proximity to the project. So I will be listening in as a resident neighbor.
Thank you very much Commissioner Birch, and we'll see you back for item three as soon. Okay. All right, so I understand Ms. Schubman will be giving the staff report for this item. However, we've also asked our town attorney to recap the information in his letter that was distributed with the agenda for this meeting. And so Ms. Schubman, do you have any additional comments about the application before Mr. Our town attorney speaks?
I don't have any additional comments. It was just to remind the commission that there are two separate desk items for the meeting. One, a letter from the applicant, and two additional public comments that have been received.
Okay, thank you very much. And I assume all the commissioners have received those items. Okay, so I will ask now for the town attorney to give us a recap of the information he had in his letter for the benefit of the public and any commissioners that wanted additional information.
Good evening Chair and Commissioners. The Planning Commission at its meeting requested further analysis of the applicability of the Housing Accountability Act for this project. And I've provided that to you in a memorandum that addresses not only Housing Accountability Act, but also addresses our housing element and the role of the Planning Commission in general as to all land use decisions. By way of background, the approved North Forty Phase One project includes 260 residential condominiums and row houses, 10 rental apartments, 49 affordable senior housing units, one unit for a moderate income manager at the senior units, approximately 62 square feet of commercial space, and a four-story parking garage with 303 parking spaces. The approved parking garage consists of three above level and one below grade level of parking. As you review my memorandum, it is important to understand that prior to the approval of the original project, the planning commission sorry about that. It is important to understand that prior to the approval of this project, the planning commission and the city council denied the project. Thereafter, the applicants filed a lawsuit against the town asserting that the town had violated the town's housing element, that the town had violated the state's Housing Accountability Act, and the town had violated the state's density bonus laws. On June 9th, 2017, the Santa Clara County Superior Court issued a decision against the town. The decision determined that the findings adopted by the town council were made under subjective policies instead of under objective policies as required by the Housing Accountability Act. On September 10th, 2017, the town council rescinded its denial of the proposed Phase One project pursuant to the court order and approved the project as I mentioned above describing the project as approved. The applicants now request a modification to Phase One project to remove the underground level of the parking for the Market Hall. My legal analysis is that the Housing Accountability Act is applicable to the modification of the approved project. The court decision related the project, required the town consider the project under the provisions of the Housing Accountability Act. The Housing Accountability Act is often referred to as California Anti-NIMBY Law, NIMBY standing for not in my backyard. The intent of the law was to address problems that the state was having where local governments were adopting housing standards and policies, and then failing to comply with their own policies when specific housing projects were at stake. The Housing Accountability Act requires local governments to approve certain housing development projects if they comply with objective general plan and zoning standards and criteria. A just interesting note is that because the town denied this project the first time around, state legislators actually amended the Housing Accountability Act and strengthening that further to require that if a public agency doesn't comply with the Housing Accountability Act, it's subject to fines and attorney's fees are mandatory to the applicant. Since the decision required the town to consider the Phase One project under the HAA, it is my legal opinion that it would apply to any modifications of that exact same project. My legal analysis also concludes that our housing element and by right development is also applicable to the modification of the approved project. State housing element law requires the town to demonstrate how it plans to accommodate its fair share of regional housing need. To do so, the town must establish an inventory of sites designated for new housing that is sufficient to accommodate its fair share of housing. The town's housing element designates the North Forty for new housing and establishes by right development for housing units on the North Forty. By right development means that if the project meets objective criteria, then the project must be approved. Based on my review, both the Housing Accountability Act and the by right development restrict the planning permission from using subjective criteria for findings to condition or deny the project. However, it is important for me to point out that you do not have to or require to follow my legal analysis. But if you do not, you should have to find and develop and make findings as to the reasons that the Housing Accountability Act and our housing elements do not apply to this application. The other issue I address in my memorandum is the role of the planning commission as it relates not only to this land use decision, but to all land use decisions. Your role for all land use decisions is in a quasi judicial role, which literally means that you're acting as a court and requires land use proceedings to be similar to those followed in the court proceedings. This requires you to act like a court for all land use decisions and apply the town's local land use regulations just as a court requires the law to be put forth to a specific set of facts of that case. The law requires you to evaluate the facts and information and then deliberate and determine how the town's applicable standards, ordinance, and laws apply to those facts and information you provide, you have been provided. You must then adopt findings of how you progressed from those facts through our established standards, laws, rules, regulations, to make that decision. The legal requirement to make findings linking the facts to our town standards is required whether or not the Housing Accountability Act or the by right development is applicable or not. The only difference is if the Housing Accountability Act and the by right development is applicable, you must only use objective standards. If it's not applicable, then you can use both objective and subjective standards that are in our rules, regulations, and laws. But you simply just cannot ignore and have no linkage between the facts and our standards. And this is why I pointed out to you in your last meeting or the meeting before that, that statements such as we need the parking or that the cost savings and profit is a strategy of the developer or that they stand to make millions of dollars, or we need to uphold their agreement, or this is a bait and switch, or we'll force visitors, shoppers, and residents to find other parking. All of those statements are inadequate and improper facts and statements to make findings upon. Although all these statements may be true, they just do not provide legal findings that will stand up in a court as they do not link those facts to anywhere in our standards, rules, and regulations. And with that, I'm available for any questions or comments that you have regarding my memorandum or any other clarification that you need.
Thank you very much to our town attorney, and it looks like you have a question from Commissioner Hudes.
Thank you. Based on the opinion that you gave us about the Housing Accountability Act, the requirement for two-thirds residential, is that based on strictly the Market Hall building? Or is that based on the scope of the Phase One application?
That's based on the whole project as a whole because that's where it's being modified. And that's just my personal opinion. You won't find that in case law. There's very little case law that interprets that. Certainly, if you just base it on the Market Hall, I don't believe they make it. They're just under it. But for any project in town that seeks a modification, you don't separate out, you don't piecemeal out a part of it and say it's only coming in for a height modification. It's a modification to the entire project, the entire conditions of approval. And that's why I based my decision on that it's applicable to the entire project. In fact, the density bonus is related to the entire project, so if you're only looking for at the Market Hall, it wouldn't take into all the other availability of state laws. And also because the Housing Accountability Act is interpreted by courts very widespread because of the intent to prevent anti-NIMBYism, that's why I reached that conclusion. But if that would be if the position of the planning commission is that it does not apply because of the fact that the town hall and that component of this project doesn't meet, then those are the findings that you could make.
Commissioner Hudes had a follow-up question?
Yeah, as a follow-up to that, does that have any bearing on whether the parking requirements are looked at only for the Market Hall building or for the project as a whole, as you've said?
My opinion, and you have to look at it as a whole. If you don't get to use the Housing Accountability Act to your advantage and then say the parking only applies to the town hall.
Thank you.
Okay, do any other commissioners have any questions of the town attorney? And you also have an opportunity to ask questions of staff. I don't see any hands raised at the moment. I do have one question for the town attorney that I wanted to ask. We did go over this in our last meeting, but for the benefit of people that might be tuning in for the first time, we've gotten so many letters from people and really heartfelt letters from people in town talking about how, you know, the developers are reneging on their commitment. And because there were proposals made in previous iterations, even at the time the application was filed and approved, where the total amount of parking that was supposed to be delivered or was intended to be delivered was more than what they're talking about right now. So my question to the town attorney is, is there any validity to they're not holding up to their agreement?
Well, no, there is no agreement. And in fact, our code and the specific plan specifically mention how you ask for a modification, and that's what they've done in this case. The procedure and process for seeking a modification is available at any time to any application on any project. The only time you have an agreement is if you've entered into a development agreement with the applicant or with the developer. Then you're taking it outside of our standards, our laws, our rules, our regulations, and you enter into what's called a development agreement, and then that agreement is binding and can prevent an applicant from coming back in for a modification. The other way to look at this project is just to look at it as if there was no modification. There was no original project approved, and the project is coming forth before you without an underground garage. And the question is, is without that underground garage, do they meet our parking regulations? Do they have enough project parking onsite? And the reason I say that is because at least I have not found anything in our code, in our specific plan or our general plan that states that an applicant will build an underground garage. So that's really your only issue tonight is have they met our parking standards with regards to parking in our specific plan, general plan, and zoning?
Okay, thank you very much. Vice Chair Janoff has a question.
Thank you. I have two questions, just to follow up on what you just were talking about regarding a development agreement. Can you confirm whether or not there is a development agreement in existence for this development?
There is not. There is not. Town council during, when we went through the moratorium on the second phase, I think there was a majority that wants us to pursue that type of an agreement on the second phase. But for the first phase, right now, there's no development agreement whatsoever.
So there's no notion that previously established estimates are numbers that the developer must be held to?
That is correct.
Okay, so my second question, if I may Chair?
Please go ahead.
So the fact that we have estimated and or changing numbers with regard to the number of parking spaces is not an objective standard on which the planning commission could deny the applicant's request?
I'm not sure I understand your question is, is yes, it's a queen slate, and you have to look at with this modification, will it meet our parking regulations? And all of our parking regulations, I believe at least, are objective standards. They say exactly how many parking spaces you need per square foot, per use, per what's being proposed out there.
So just to
So it's, yes, what they've provided in the past, what was in their first application is not relevant. What you look at is what is the required parking under our standards? And I don't, and I don't believe there's any, there might be some parking standards that could be considered subjective within our policies, but for the most part, they're calculated as objective standards.
So just to follow up, if I may, the question was, one of the letters received from the public indicated that because the numbers of parking provided by the applicant changed from Exhibit A11 to Exhibit 4 to Exhibit A, and the assertion from that member of the public was that because those estimated parking numbers change, then that is an objective standard, that they're not consistent, is an objective standard on which we could deny the proposal. And what I understand you to be saying is that it's not an objective standard.
That's correct. It is not what they proposed or what was approved. The question is, is what is our rules, regulations, and standard require for the applicant?
One more question, if I might, and this probably is best for staff. Staff, is it fair to say that the estimated number of parking spaces could remain in flux until the specific plan for the commercial buildout of the plans in Phase One are presented to the town for review and approval of the permits? Is that correct?
Ms. Schubman, you're on mute, but if you'd rather I speak, I'm more than happy. Go ahead.
So that's true. We don't have any proposals for those other commercial buildings at this time. What we have is the proposal for the Market Hall. Any other use that came in for those other commercial components would have to show that they meet the requirement for that.
So, and even on the Market Hall, we don't have the specific commercial buildout at this time to know precisely the number of leasable square footage upon which the parking ratio would be determined. Is that correct?
We have estimates of the uses in the Market Hall from the applicant, so they've shown a community room. They've showed a bakery potentially, and then they've showed the residential units above.
And could the commercial numbers change based on a smaller footprint of leasable commercial space?
I believe there's a possibility of that, and the director can confirm that.
Thank you. So through the chair, the footprint for the Market Hall building hasn't changed. The other pad buildings could change slightly. Given our current parking requirements, and these are tied back to the downtown, if they had some small, you know, offices or something that they proposed in part of either the Market Hall or one of the other tenant buildings, that again, as Ms. Schubman mentioned, they would need to show that they meet the requirements because, for example, parking for office is parked at a different ratio than the 1 per 300, which is most of the other uses that are anticipated for the Phase One of the North Forty.
Thank you.
Right, Commissioner Hudes?
Yeah, I understand that the original application had certain requests, and now we're looking at an application for the Market Hall. My question is about the modification to the Market Hall application that we're considering now. There was information that was presented to us on 826, which is inconsistent with later documents. Are we to consider all the information that's been presented in this application?
And I'm not sure what specifically information you're looking at right now. I think the latest information is Exhibit A, which has a table for the transition district in Market Hall, but I'd love to Ms. Schubman confirm that.
Yes, the most reason is Exhibit A that was provided by the applicant from their letter dated September 21st.
I understand this is really a question, I think, for the town attorney. If we've been presented with documents as part of this application for modification along the course of the three or four meetings that we've had, are we to consider all of that information?
Yes, you are. That's all part of the record, and you should consider it all. And if there's discrepancies between documents, you should try to resolve those, and if you can't, that could be the basis of your decision for either denial or approval. So yes, all documents that have been submitted for this modification are part of the record and should be taken into consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz.
And then if any other commissioners have questions, I don't see any hands at the moment, but I do wanted to ask the question of staff. We discussed it in a previous meeting, but again, I want to make sure we're all on the same page. The objective standard for parking for this application, which we're holding them to, is define where? And can you summarize what it is?
It's defined in the specific plan. In the specific plan on, we're looking at 2.58 parking requirements, and that references the number of off-street spaces required, and it references the zoning code for that.
And then, and then that, so that is the standard for which you did your analysis when you determined that the applicant's proposal to remove the parking garage continued to meet the parking requirements because those are the ones that were set forth in the North Forty specific plan, correct? Okay.
And to, I believe you asked for some specificity. So for the commercial under what's currently before you, we're looking at the majority of the space at the 1 per 300 square feet, and then the community room at the 1 per 590 square feet. And then the community room at the one per 590 square feet parking requirement for that community room. And then the residential parking is laid out in table two dash four in the parking requirements, which is half a space for each senior unit and half a guest space for each senior unit. And then one space for one-bedroom units plus half a guest space. And for two bedrooms or more, it's two spaces plus half a guest space.
And so just to follow, thank you very much. And to follow up on that, supposing that the concerns of residents become realized and that we, it turns out that, that there isn't enough parking yet then, what, what can we do to improve the situation going forward? You know, should we decide that we need more stringent parking standards for further expansion? What, what can we do?
Sure. So I think, you know, there's a couple of options there. The first one would be as part of whatever decision you render, you know, that ultimately future direction be provided to the town council to reconsider the parking in the specific plan. So that you could look at the potential of modifying the parking requirements for later phases. So that's an option. Obviously, we have other programs from, I know there's been a lot of comments about spilling over into adjacent residential areas. We obviously have parking methods that we can use through, you know, whether it's permit parking or some other mechanism that could be looked at. And ultimately, you know, I think the, when we get there, if that, if that does come to light, then hopefully well before that, the town council has decided to take a, you know, relook at the specific plan and determine whether or not those parking standards should be adjusted and go through that specific plan amendment process.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Tavanna has his hand up.
Yeah, quick question here. So this is really the specific plan, since we're talking about that. In section 3.3.2, Part D, it says below-grade parking is encouraged with entries placed at the rear or sides of the structure whenever possible. I'm wondering if that could be used as a reason to leave the underground parking structure? And if it's about removing parking and they want to reduce parking maybe from the third or fourth level, could that be used as a subjective standard?
It cannot. That was actually brought up at the last, well, not, not the last meeting, but I think the meeting before that by Commissioner Hudes. And that is specifically in the residential section, and that is not an objective standard. Encouraging something is not an objective standard.
And then I did have one more question on the parking. There, it, it did come to my attention that, that, that the way we look at this thing is, is based on what the parking code is at the time that they go for their building permit. So I'm asking staff, I understand there was a change in how we do restaurant parking and, and, and how that flows through to this application. So I was wondering if you could just go through that.
Sure. So the town code was amended for how we deal with required parking for restaurants. It used to be based on them were seats in a restaurant or a bar. That's no longer the case. It's based on, it's the parking requirement is just like any other commercial use. That's one space for 300 square, for 300 square feet, and that's the gross floor area.
And so the way, the way this flows through to the North Forty specific plan is, I, I, I don't have the plan in front of me, but my understanding is it refers to the, whatever the downtown parking code is that's in place or something like that, not the number of seats per restaurant. It's based on whatever the downtown parking code is, or did I not get that right? So, so if, if, if
That's correct.
Okay.
That's clear.
Okay. So if it turned out they needed a few, a few less spots on account of that standard? I don't know if that's the case, but if they did, that's the standard we've been holding them to because it, we're referring to the North Forty specific plan that refers to the parking code that we're using downtown. Okay. And I think Commissioner Badami had her hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. My question is, can we use land use policies within a specific plan as objective findings?
So I'll start and see what the town attorney has to add, if anything. But ultimately it would depend on the, on which policy or standard you're using, what it says. We would have to evaluate that on a case-by-case basis. So if you have a specific one in mind, let us know and we'll take a look at that.
Yes, yes. Within your general plan and specific plan, there's both many objective and subjective standards. Most zoning code are almost always subjective, but you'll find even some subjective standards within your zoning code. So they all have a mix. And the issue is of whether, is whether, you know, when you look at that specific language, whether they're objective or not, or, or subjective.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tavanna.
I have a question, yeah, about the traffic impact analysis. So how many parking spaces were accounted for in the traffic impact analysis for Phase One?
So two things to that point, the parking is not looked at in a traffic impact analysis. And parking is also no longer a CEQA issue that needs to be addressed.
Okay, so just really quick to follow up that. So the thorough review of parking access, circulation and supply, it says here at least in the TIA should be conducted when parcel level development proposals are submitted. Was that conducted or is that not a requirement you're saying?
So traffic impact analysis was done. I don't have the traffic impact analysis in front of me, but they looked at all of those things. But now parking is no longer a CEQA issue. And to further that, we no longer also use LOS for CEQA perspective. It's now vehicle miles traveled, which the town is still trying to go through, even though that is in place as of July 1st of this year.
Okay. Do any other commissioners have questions of staff? Commissioner Barnett?
Yeah, concerning the question of whether a land use provision in the general plan is subjective or objective, I'd like to suggest LU-13.4, which states that new development on Los Catos Boulevard shall be designed to minimize adverse impacts on adjacent residential areas. Would you consider that subjective or objective?
So I defer to the town attorney, but with the original approval, that policy would have been reviewed and determined to be inappropriate. But I'm not sure if the town attorney has any additional input on that.
Well, it's, it's, it's for you to deliberate. If, if you remember and review the tapes from two years ago, I'm really not going to decide whether a policy is objective or subjective. That's for the planning commission to decide. I'm providing you the law. I will provide with the definition of objective. And then maybe you can debate whether that policy is subjective and objective. And objective means involving no personal or subjective judgment by a public official and being uniformly verifiable by reference to an external and uniform benchmark or criterion available and knowledgeable by both the development applicant and the proponent and the public official. I know that's a lot of legalese in there, but the big one is it involves no personal or subjective judgment. And, and if you read that policy at least, you could certainly reach to the conclusion that two people could have a different opinion as to whether there would be an impact to neighboring neighborhoods. And therefore would not be, it would be subject to a personal judgment.
Did that answer your question, Commissioner Barnett? And Commissioner Hudes has his hand up.
Thank you for the information about the parking requirements. On the applicant's chart numbers in, in the, in, in the original modification application, they have a version of 3.22. And it refers to parking for non-commercial, well, for other commercial uses such as restaurant and bar as 100 square feet other than 300 square feet. How did those numbers get arrived at and were they reviewed by staff?
So those were assumptions made by the developer based on the requirements at the time, which was seats. So what I envisioned they did was they imagined we're going to have X square footage of restaurant and assume we're going to have X square footage of bar based on that square footage and other operations. Here's a reasonable metric to use for that, so that they were accounting for that, knowing that the one per 300 may not work in all those instances. And so they looked at that and made that assumption. We were aware of that assumption, but ultimately it was just that, an assumption.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do any other commissioners have questions of staff before we go to hear from the applicant? Okay, we will have another chance to, go ahead, Commissioner Barnett. And, and for the commission, we will have another chance to ask questions of staff when we make our deliberations. But, but I think it's good to get as many questions out as we can now. So Commissioner Barnett.
I think this has been touched on, but it's not clear in my mind which law would apply the town code relating to downtown parking at the time the original application was made? And now that the modification is applied for?
I believe the town attorney answered that previously and it's what the current regulations are, but I would love to him to confirm that.
That was my question. Thank you.
But that is correct. It's, it's at the time of the modification applicant was filed would be the time that the laws that they have to comply with. Just as if we had strengthened and changed the parking or any other regulation, if they come in for a modification, they would have to comply with it.
And just for the commission's information, that modification was made in 2018. So well before this application was submitted.
Okay. And then I had just one more follow-up question about the, about the other commercial pads. So right now, we, I, I think this was touched on a little bit earlier. The other pads are, are not under purchased by a developer or under contract by a developer. So at the moment, my understanding is that the, the information that's coming from the applicant in terms of parking is estimated numbers only based on, you know, what the possible maximum square footage could be. Is that correct? And we won't know until those developers come in and make a specific proposal, what parking requirements they'll have specifically. So that's my question. Is that right?
I believe, I believe the numbers are based on the pads that were in the original architecture and site, but the applicant could probably provide additional information on that. When those additional pads come in, we're going to check them against the parking requirements and make sure that they still meet that. And if there's any significant expansion of footprint, for instance, then that's probably something that may generate the need for a modification.
Thank you very much. That answers my question. And so then are there any other questions from commissioners before I go to the applicant? Okay, seeing none, I will, we will open up the public hearing and first give the applicant an opportunity to address the commission for up to five minutes. And I think I saw Mr. Keeney in the attendees list for Summerhill.
Yes, I have allowed Mr. Keeney to speak, so he can just unmute himself and he will have five minutes.
Yes, I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Good evening, Commissioner Hanson, members of the planning commission and staff. My name is Michael Keeney and I am the development manager for Summerhill Homes on the North Forty project. As we explained at the hearing on September 9th, the proposed modification for Market Hall is consistent with the North Forty specific plan and the town code. For the town code, Market Hall is required to provide 76 commercial parking spaces and 50 residential spaces for a total of 124 required spaces. With the proposed amendment, Market Hall will provide 126 commercial spaces and 50 residential spaces. This is a surplus of 52 commercial spaces or 70% more than is required. At our last planning commission meeting, there were a number of questions and public comments about the parking calculations for Market Hall and the commercial transition district as a whole. To help clarify these questions for the commission and the community, we prepared the transition district parking summary, which is exhibit A that I think staff can put up on your screen and is included in your packet. It was in the desk item that we provided and it was also in our response letter prior to the hearing. There it is. This table provides a complete summary of the parking requirements for the transition district. Market Hall is shaded in blue and indicates, excuse me, and includes the gross square footage based on our proposed design. The items in orange are the gross square footages for each building based on what was proposed in the approved ANS plans, as shown on the sheet 3.22 of that plan set. The green are the remaining residential units from the same sheet 3.22. Staff has reviewed this table and concurs that it accurately reflects the information included in the ANS approved plans and is in compliance with the requirements of the specific plan. As you can see from the table, the total required parking for the transition district is 273 parking spaces. And as concurrently proposed, there would be a total of 319 parking spaces. The surplus of 46 spaces for the district as a whole. There is no obligation in the conditions or the specific plan for Market Hall to provide parking for future phases. You can see from the transition district parking summary that with the proposed modification, we have provided more parking than is required by the town code. And the staff report is founded in conformance with the specific plan. This is the third hearing that the planning commission has held for the proposed modification to Market Hall. We appreciate the commission's desire to ensure public participation. And we believe that the commission and the public have had a full opportunity to review and comment thoroughly on the plans. We respectfully request that the commission find that the proposed amendment is consistent with the specific and the zoning code and approve this modification tonight. We're available to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keeney. And do any, we do have questions for our commissioners. Commissioner Badami?
Mr. Keeney, thank you. I'm looking at sheet A3. And I, I just want to ask you, are there any other modifications to the plans other than removal of the underground parking?
So sheet A3 of our plan set application, correct?
Correct.
So that's the third floor plan? And to answer your question, there are no other modifications to the appearance of the building from the outside. There are some minor modifications internal to the garage to accommodate mechanical equipment rooms and things like that that may have been in the basement and are now in areas where like the ramp used to allow access to the basement. So there's a few kind of back-of-house rooms that are shifting around, but nothing that's visible from the exterior.
Is there an entrance or an exit on the northwest side that's been removed that provides ingress egress to the, to the commercial area, the commercial district?
So what you're seeing in the as-proposed drawing is essentially what was approved in the building permit. So during the building permit process, that access point was eliminated.
So the only access, the only ingress egress is on the east side?
That's correct. Yes.
And this was previously approved? If staff could confirm that?
This was approved as the potential for modifications for the garage. That's correct.
So that's part of this application? Removing that ingress egress point? Not sure I understand.
I don't have the building permit plans in front of me and I'm not sure. I'm trying to scroll through the plans to see which sheet A3 you're looking at. And so I'll look at that. But without the underground, there would be only one ingress egress point if the underground is not approved. I will have to go back and see if I can dig up the building permit plans from when this was done as part of the original plan check.
That would be important to me because we may have a circulation issue. Thank you.
Do other commissioners have questions for the applicant? Okay, well, I'm waiting to see if anyone else has any questions. I did have a question for the applicant. So in your, in your projections for the entire transition district, you talked about a surplus of 46 spaces, of which 52 are from the parking garage on, with the market hall. And then there would be And then there would be six spaces that would be needed by the remainder of the commercial pads. Now, I'm completely familiar with the fact that we don't actually have proposals for those pads. But supposing that they did, they did turn out to be exactly what you had suggested and ever had estimated, there would be a shortage of six spaces. So my question to the applicant is how how would that work out for those developers? Yes, we know they have to apply, you know, be able to deal with the code that's in place at the time. But if they really are short six spaces, would they be able to share space with the parking garage, which does have overages? And how would that work?
So I think I understand you're saying that with the potential shortfall in the commercial district, how would we accommodate allowing for some of that overflow parking within the Market Hall? I think that's what you're getting at.
That is my question. Yes, thank you.
So the Market Hall isn't the Market Hall isn't obligated to do that, but our hope is that the commercial, we're hoping that the developer of the commercial space in Market Hall will also be the developer of the commercial pads. The goal is for it all to be developed concurrently with one developer and then ultimately one manager of the commercial property that manages the whole district. So it's in our interests and in that master developer, commercial developer's interests to have some shared parking agreements to make all of that work. So our expectation would be that we would work something out with them to accommodate their parking needs.
Okay, that makes sense. I mean, I think it's in everyone's best interest for it to be successful. So I think that's what you're saying is that we can, we can't count on it, but we can assume that that would be the case. Okay, thank you.
It's certainly in our interest to accommodate.
Absolutely, okay. Do any other commissioners have questions for the applicant before I go to public comments? All right, seeing none. We will now move to the public comments portion of the hearing. And I see we have quite a number of people in the attendees, but I don't know who wants to speak. So this would be the time to to speak on this item. And I ask anyone that would like to speak to limit your comments to three minutes. And as I said earlier, or any oral comments during the meeting, you may choose to state your name or address or speak anonymously. And do understand that the meeting is being recorded for the public record. So, Mr. Paulson, can you let me know if there are members of the public that would like to speak?
There are. So the first speaker will be Mark Miller. I'm going to allow him to talk. You unmute yourself, Mr. Miller.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. You know, I understand that, well, thank you for the opportunity, by the way, to speak. I think I understand the town's needs to comply with the Housing Accountability Act and the By Right Development Act. So, but if you, if you'd excuse my subjective comment for a moment. My neighbors and I already deal with employees of the car wash overflow, overflow from PAMF. I can only imagine the overflow, what that would look like if insufficient parking existed at the North Forty. And that would be, that would be just incredible. And that doesn't even count the short cutters that race through the neighborhood trying to find a way around Park Avenue and Wisconsin Boulevard. So it's difficult to look at this any other way than how it's going to affect myself and my my neighbors and my family, obviously. The, I guess the first question that comes to my mind when I heard the the opening comments. I understand there's no development agreement. Well, why not? Isn't that something that would protect us? I mean, I would think that that there would be measures in place to to protect the residents. And, you know, another thing that comes to mind that I don't know where I am on three minutes here, but the, I really, some comments were made. I think Mr. Keeney said that there's full opportunity to review. I'd like to know where I'd review that because I'm not aware of it. I didn't see that. I don't know. I'd like somebody to tell me where that is. I'm sure it's in full view somewhere, but I didn't even know about this meeting until I was told, you know, from from some of my neighbors. And so I have some concerns about about transparency here. And I want some assurances that the town is operating in the best interest of its residents. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Do any commit and for the for the benefit of the commentator as well as other commentators, we're not able to to address questions directly. However, we may be able to during our deliberations, talk about the issues that you bring up. And so with that, do any commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, is there someone else that would like to speak on this item?
There is the next person I'm going to let speak is Mr. Lockridge.
Okay.
Okay, hi, my name is Jeff Lockridge and I live at the north end of Los Gatos near the North Forty. I personally have worked hard to get the North Forty to be the best that it can be for the town. And it's my understanding that Summerhill Homes, who are currently building on the North Forty, are requesting now, after the fact, the elimination of underground parking for the portion under the Market Hall. The Market Hall plan included that four story parking garage, three above grade levels and one below grade level. And this was approved years ago and designed to accommodate parking at the North Forty. As a resident of Los Gatos, I don't look at the North Forty in phases. It's one North Forty project. That's why it's called forty. If it was less than that, it might be twenty or eighteen. Utilizing the current parking requirements for only the phase one portion of the North Forty would be irresponsible for the town to consider since we know for a fact phase two will require additional parking. So Summerhill knew what the project was and what it included before they signed on and agreed to build it. They knew it included underground parking. So just how much money will they save eliminating what they already agreed to build? And you can't claim anti-Nimbyism because we want it built there. We want more parking built there, not less parking, not in my backyard. It's in my backyard, build it in my backyard. So that doesn't even apply. Does Summerhill have to abide by a subjective versus objective reasoning for so for any of these changes to modifications? Minimums versus maximums? If you ask me, maximum should be in place in all cases because that's what might be required objectively. I realize that senior housing parking requirements are just one half space per unit. I also know through personal experience, the consequences that just one half parking space creates. It does not represent the reality of the real parking requirements for senior housing. I have personal experience of dealing with in another senior development in Los Gatos, and struggle on a daily basis to deal with those irresponsible and unrealistic parking requirements. I would support pursuing a development agreement as a town of the Los of Los Gatos application modification. So I think we should apply for a modification and it should include a development agreement. I'd like to know whether that's subjective or objective. So I think that the modification should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Do any commissioners have questions? Vice Chair Janoff.
Thank you. This in consideration of Mr. Lockridge's comments and question for town attorney. Is it possible to enter into a development agreement after the fact?
I have never done one before, but at any time, an agreement can be reached. So I've never done in a development agreement and I've done many of them, but I've never done one after a project's already been approved. But certainly, if if the applicant wanted a development agreement at this point in time, one I believe one could be entered into. And certainly, as the previous speaker asked, why a development agreement wasn't done for phase one? Counsel at that time did not want to enter into a development agreement. But as I mentioned, when we were going through making changes to phase two, they have specifically added language about a development agreement and the intent is to do a development agreement on phase two.
Thank you.
Do any other commissioners have questions of the speaker? Okay, well, then we will move on and see if there are any other speakers. I'd see someone with their hand up.
Yes, thank you. Allow Barbara Gottson to speak.
Okay, go ahead.
Can you hear me? Oh, okay. Good evening. Obviously, it's hard for members of the community to keep up with Summerhill's ever changing story. Summerhill submitted an application in which it said it would be providing even three hundred thirty or three hundred thirty one parking spaces in the transition district. Now, with its new exhibit A, it says it will be providing three hundred nineteen spaces. Previously, Summerhill claimed excess of fifty two spaces. Now the excess is forty six. Can approval really be based on an addendum that contradicts the original proposal? I also think it's important to remember that Summerhill was party to the original twenty sixteen proposal along with Grosvenor and Eden Housing. It didn't take over a proposal that was agreed to by another party. Summerhill was party to the original proposal. If it didn't want to build the garage, it should have said so in twenty sixteen. Approval with the three applicants Grosvenor, Summerhill and Eden was based on a commitment to include an underground garage. It's not acceptable now to say, well, we really don't want to do that after all. Notion that there was no agreement is, I think, debatable since the underground garage was a condition of approval and was the subject of considerable discussion. Another point, since we don't know how much commercial space there will be, it seems a bad idea to reduce parking. Parking continues to rely only on assumptions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for your comments and thank you also for all your written comments as well with your amount of research that you've done. We truly appreciate it. I want to know if any commissioners have any questions for the speaker. Okay, I don't see anyone with their hand up. So is there anyone else that would like to speak on this matter? Director Paulson is on mute, like he's talking.
Thank you for that. I see that Mr. Miller has his hand up again. We only allow folks to speak once, however, he may have another family member. So I'm going to allow him to speak just to find out if it's another family member on the same computer.
Hi, yes.
That is correct.
It is correct. This is Lisa, Mark's wife. And I just had a couple of questions that came up that if Commissioner Badami hadn't commented about the changes being made with no review beyond staff, how would anyone know about them? And then how many other changes have been made from the approved set of documents to the construction documents being used to build the project? This has been going on for a long time. I don't know, where's this transparency?
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. As I said, we can't directly answer your question, but we we could, we could during our deliberations address some of the questions with staff. Okay, is there, is there anyone else that would, and was there any questions for the speaker from the other commissioners? I don't see anyone with their hands up. So is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item?
Yes, we do have another person with their hand up. Yeah, looks like Maria Ristau.
Okay.
Hi, Maria Ristau. I'm just concerned that this is even continued from the beginning. I mean, it seemed like at the first meeting when this came up, there was plenty of residential opposition to allowing this change. And now, as the continuations have occurred, there's more and more data coming up about why we can't just say build the parking. When we created the specific plan, I think Jeff Lockridge put it really well. This is for the whole North Forty. And so the parking should be should be considered for the entire scope of the project. Going into it, the first developer to go in had to do all of the traffic mitigation, twelve million dollars for the entire build out. I don't understand why, when there was a plan to build the underground parking that may or may not be excessive for this part, knowing that cars will be involved in phase two, knowing that we'll need more parking, knowing that underground parking is superior to street parking in terms of aesthetics, why we can't hold them to this agreement? And Summerhill can figure it out with the next project. I know whoever did, it was probably Summerhill, did all of the initial infrastructure that they will have, will be able to hold other developers to reimburse them for what they've done. Why can't they figure out that out with the parking garage if they've built excessive parking? I don't understand why this is even an issue right now, but I think we need the underground parking. We'll never be able to go back to an existing parking garage and dig underground parking again. And I would like to see this move forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do any commissioners have questions for Ms. Ristau? Vice Chair Janoff.
Thank you. Not a question for Ms. Ristau, but for either town attorney or staff. A couple of people have talked about tonight whether, why Summerhill shouldn't be held to the general proposal for the entire North Forty, not just phase one. Would someone please comment on, and maybe this goes back to the to the applicant. I don't fully understand the the transfer of the project from Grosvenor to Summerhill and its scope. But if someone from staff could please comment on why the phase two portion, which is largely commercial, that the phase one underground parking was to support, why that is not to, not under consideration by the planning commission at this time?
So we, I'll start and then if the town attorney has any additional information. But ultimately, our town code requires the parking to be provided on the site or with the project that is before you. So they may or may not have overparked it with anticipation of wanting to build less parking on the phase two. When, whether it's phase two, three, four, seven, whatever number it is. When any future project comes in, they will have to show how they're meeting the parking requirements for their specific property. And so that will be done, you know, with every subsequent project that comes through the town for review. And then I defer to the town attorney as well.
Yes, so in very layman's term, each project that comes in front of you is analyzed on its own merits. And this or any other project, there can be many other parcels around it. But let's say for the North Forty, there are other parcels that are much smaller. And if they came in with a proposal, they need to meet their parking regulations. We wouldn't say to that propose, even if it's three or four acres, because there's some parkers, parcels out there that are smaller than this proposed. And if they came in and proposed a project, we wouldn't be able to tell them you need to do an underground project because there may be some other future projects. That's just not the way land use law works. You have to meet the regulations for your proposed project and not for other ones around there. Now, the the way this was supposed to be proposed and it was going supposedly to work would be is, yes, they were overparked and they were going to be providing parking for phase two. And what would have happened is, is when phase two would have been developed, they would have been able to use, let's just assume numbers, I'm just throwing out numbers. There was four hundred parking spaces required because of the parking on phase two. They would have been able to use and get a parking agreement with phase one and let's say provide only three hundred spaces because they had a hundred spaces in a shared parking agreement. That no longer will be available. So phase two now will have to develop their own parking to meet all the regulations and they won't be able to do a shared parking agreement with phase. to meet all the regulations, and they won't be able to do a shared parking agreement with Phase One. But if you were, if the comments are that this overparking was going to be used by Phase Two, and Phase Two was still gonna have to meet all of its parking regulations, that's not the way it was going to happen. They would have used a shared agreement to use these parking spaces. So yes, the burden now will be on any future development, and there won't be that ability to do a shared parking agreement with Phase One, because those extra spaces have been eliminated to the most, to the, to the most part.
Quick follow-up, if I may. So, given the history of this, of the North Forty, when there was sort of a master plan for all 40 acres, under that vision, there was the sharing of parking obligation as a notion. But since the, since that larger 40 acres is no longer what's being developed, or we don't have plans for it, and we don't know at this point whether that will be commercial, or housing, or if it's ever developed at all. So we are not, practically speaking, even though the promise of a lot of parking sounded pretty great to a lot of residents in town, that is no longer a consideration for tonight.
That is correct. We have, we have no application in the process. We don't know if, if because of the climate changes and everything happening with brick and mortar, it might not even be commercial. A project could come forward that could state that they want to enter a development agreement to supply additional housing. And they'd still have to meet the requirements for housing, but there wouldn't be any commercial parking requirements. So at this point in time, we don't know, or it couldn't, it could be that they want to even do more commercial that's even allowed in our specific plan, and then have to provide additional parking, which this underground would have been able to help out on that Phase Two, but instead, might require a underground parking on Phase Two.
For sure, Hudes.
Thank you. We don't have an application for Phase Two, but I just want to verify, we do have an application for Phase One that was submitted on 8/1/2017. Is that correct?
8/1/2017.
Or is it approved on?
I think it might have been, that's about the time when it was approved.
By the council? The council's original approval?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, and that approval has parking requirements noted in it, correct?
The parking requirement, specific plan have not changed. The parking for the restaurant and bars, as Ms. Schutman mentioned earlier, has changed. And so, there's no correlating piece for the, for the specific plan. And so, now we're under the new modification. And as the town attorney mentioned before, we would use the parking requirements that are currently in place.
Thank you.
Okay, so, and I want to remind the commission that we were still in public comments, so we're only able to ask generally questions of the people that spoke. But I allowed it, it's fine. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak on this matter?
Yes, Ms. Quintana has her hand raised. I'm gonna allow her to speak.
Go ahead.
Oh, we have a similar issue we've had with her in the past. I'm gonna have to move her up into the panelists and allow her to speak, so hold on one second. So Ms. Quintana, if you unmute yourself, then you can go ahead and speak.
I'm unmuted. I just want to add one thing to the discussion. And that's just to, excuse me. My recollection of the changes to the parking were a result of the fact that the downtown businesses felt that there should be equity in the parking requirements between downtown and the North Forty, and that the North Forty was being required to, to supply more parking than was required downtown, and therefore was putting downtown.
Okay, was there anything else? I see she's on mute now, so. Do any, okay. So Ms. Quintana, I'm assuming your comments are completed, because you're on mute right now.
Okay, I'm gonna move her back to attendees. She hasn't unmuted.
Okay. All right, so do any commissioners have questions of Ms. Quintana? All right, and then Director Paulson, do we have anyone else that wanted to speak in public comments?
I don't see anyone else with a hand raised. If you would like to speak on this item, please use the raise hand feature. Please give it a couple of seconds here. I do not see anyone with their hands raised. Chair.
Okay, so, and we do, we have, as the commission knows, and the public knows, we've received quite a number of written comments as well. But since there's no one else that has raised their hand to speak in the hearing tonight, I will now close, or I will invite back the applicant to address the commission for up to three minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner Hanson. We, we wanted to clarify one thing that came up. Commissioner Badami was asking about the secondary access point to the garage, and we were able to go back and double-check on the history of that from our perspective. And the elimination of the second access point to the garage that was shown in the original A and S approval was done during the schematic design in coordination with planning and the building department in the spring of 2018. It was done under the discretion of the director of planning, as is consistent with the town's policy. There's still a loading area in that location. And the building permit that we have been issued for the building includes that modification. The modification to eliminate the basement has no relationship to how that access point would be implemented going forward. So with that, we'd like to thank staff and commission for taking the time to review our proposed modification, and we're available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Are there commissioners that would like to add to applicant questions? Commissioner Hudes. You need to take yourself off mute.
Sorry, you mentioned that you have a building permit. When was that permit issued?
I, I don't have the exact date in front of me, but I believe it was in January of this year.
Okay, thank you.
All right, do any other commissioners have questions of the applicant? I do want to remind the commission that once I close the public hearing, we won't be, will ask questions of the, of the applicant, although we can ask questions of staff. Okay, it doesn't look like anyone else has any questions for the applicant. So then, I will close the public hearing, and then we will move to having questions from the commission. Normally, we would say, questions or comments from the commission or a motion, but I would prefer if we could have a discussion about the application before we get to the stage of a motion, so that we can kind of see where the pulse of the commission is. So that being the case, I'm gonna open it up to questions or comments, or questions of staff from the commission. Commissioner Badami.
This is probably for staff, but I'm concerned about the building permit that was issued, and that was in advance of the potential loss of this parking. And now, with the loss of parking, should this proceed, we've got an ingress and egress issue that impacts the rest of the development. It's supposed to be a fully integrated project. And it concerns me with the circulation patterns throughout this development that might affect traffic going through the residential area and backing up to Los Gattis Boulevard. Is that something that we can revisit or make a finding on tonight?
I'm not aware of any objective standards related to circulation. I know we have looked at it, and I'll have to try to go back through my emails. We looked at other parking garage situations, whether underground or otherwise, and looked to see whether or not a certain number of spaces, whether there was a relationship to what was appropriate for one versus two. Obviously, a lot of that has to do with site configurations. As was mentioned, there have been modifications from the original conceptual A and S approval that was done. This was one of those modifications that was permitted. And understand, if you are aware of the objective standard relating to circulation, and you want to use that as a finding for denial or otherwise, then that's perfectly fine. As I, the attorney mentioned before.
Thank you.
Ms. Hudes.
Yes, the building permit that was issued, did that contain underground parking?
And I'm sorry, I, I think Mr. Keen misspoke. The building permit, I don't think, has been issued for that building. We have issued building permits for some of the models. They have a building permit in currently that's been in plan check. I believe it's ready to be issued, and it does include the underground parking. So currently, the plans that we've been reviewing include the underground parking.
So it wasn't clear, what permits have been issued?
So there have been a number of infrastructure permits issued, grading permits issued, site improvements issued, off-site improvements issued. Three of the models, they're basically building one of each building type for the residential component. And I believe they've also picked up their model trailer and parking lot permit.
And so, of the building permits that have been issued that are relevant to this building, did they include permits for underground parking?
And one second, I'm just trying to go back through an email here real quick, because I think they actually did pull, they did get issued the permit. And I want to say it was in June, maybe. But it has been, it has, that one actually has been issued, and I believe it's been paid for. And they did, that one does include the underground parking. So what's approved now? If they were going to, if they ultimately get approval to remove the underground parking, then they will have to come back and submit a revision to the building permits and go through that process to make those modifications.
Thank you.
Do any other commissioners have questions or staff or comments on the application? Commissioner Barnett?
Yeah, for Mr. Schultz, do you have a comment on the point that was raised about the HAA not applying because additional parking is being requested? In other words, the comment was that this would actually facilitate housing.
No, I don't. I'm looking directly at the Housing Accountability Act that just talks about mixed-use projects and housing projects, and that you have to apply objective standards. And in this case, it's parking. And so, you apply your objective standards to it. You can't then take a subjective standard that you want more parking than what's in your, in your specific plan or your parking zoning ordinance and say you want more, even though you've already agreed to what the parking requirements were. So although, yes, more parking, the better. I think no one disagrees with that. The problem is, is why the HAA was formed was so that towns and cities cannot change in the middle of a project coming in when people object to it, to deny that project. In this case, you, you need to concentrate on the parking regulations and whether they meet those or not. That's what I would suggest, as opposed to a subjective standard as to whether more, more parking is better and will be better for this project.
Okay, do you other, do commissioners have additional questions of staff? Or would you like to make comments on the application? Commissioner Hudes, and then Commissioner Badami. I'm sure he is here on mute.
I have some lengthy comments and some analysis that I've done. And I have no more questions of staff, though. So perhaps Commissioner Badami should go first.
Okay, so I will give the floor to Commissioner Badami.
All right, I was just gonna make my comments. And the specific plan was meant to be an integrated project. It's supposed to be integrated with roads, water, PG&E, residential and business flow. Right now, we've got a modification in parking, but we also have a modification that we weren't aware of, of a reduction in the access point for ingress and egress to the commercial district. So that kind of closes that off and isolates it. To me, I'm concerned with circulation, because now you're gonna overburden the residential and transition district. You're gonna have business traffic that goes out through the residential neighborhood, goes out to Los Gattis Boulevard. Again, I've got concerns with circulation and linkage with the rest of the other districts within the project. Some of this violates some of our objective findings that I can make, actually, and that is to provide linkage with vehicle or circulation, minimize traffic impacts through the site design and access, and the Park Once design. Those are my comments for now.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Badami. Commissioner Hudes, did you want to make your comments? You said you also had something you wanted to share with the commission.
Yes, and I think Ms. Armour has a copy of a PDF of it. I believe I'm not permitted to share my screen. So I, before I even get into this, I want to just make it clear that I don't believe that the project meets the objective standards for the parking requirements. The North Forty specific plan, as far as I can tell, when I read it, requires 392 parking spaces for the submitted application. Eliminating the underground parking will eliminate 127 of those spaces, leaving 319, which is 73 spaces less than what is required by the specific plan. Therefore, the application doesn't meet the requirements of the specific plan. And I believe these are all objective standards. Before I get to explaining the spreadsheet, I also want to distinguish clearly between required parking and provided parking. The applicant has been clear on one thing through their correspondence on this modification, and that is the number of spaces that they would like to provide or eliminate. And that is, they'd like to provide 176 in the, in the, in the garage. However, the application from 8/26 hearing and through today is inconsistent on a number of other matters, which are necessary to evaluate whether the request meets objective standards. Number one, the number of spaces that will be provided outside the parking structure is different. In different documents, the applicant has represented 155 spaces and 143 spaces. I looked at the plans that were submitted, and I counted 150. So there are discrepancies in terms of how, how many parking spaces are provided outside of the garage. The number, number two, the number of spaces required in order to meet the uses in the market hall, and how many spaces are required to meet the uses in other buildings in the Lark and Transition districts as set forth by the North Forty specific plan. These requirements form the basis of the objective standards by which the application must be evaluated. So due to these inconsistencies, I created a spreadsheet to try to summarize the required and provided parking. So unfortunately, I can't zoom in, but Ms. Armour, maybe you could make it a little bit bigger in terms of that top portion. Yeah, thank you, that's great. So when I read the application that was deemed complete when it was approved by the council on 8/1/2017, they appeared to be 104 spaces. they appeared to be 104 spaces over the requirement. However, there were some errors in that when I checked it against consistency with the application itself and with the specific plan. Primarily, the 285 that were required was based on net leasable space, not on gross square footage. The ordinance clearly states that gross square footage is the requirement in downtown. That's, let's see. That's the ordinance that has changed, but it's been consistent. Its code of ordinance is 29 dot 10 dot 150B. And so the, if you could, the correct, as I'm looking at it, number should have been 345 required. The other, the other thing that I believe was incorrect is that there were 47 spaces provided for affordable senior, including guest. And those, again, came from counting the spaces on the rooftop parking. There are three additional spaces, but they are on a different level and therefore they can't be gated and regulated for senior parking. And the applicant has represented in previous testimony that the senior parking will be gated. So I made a small adjustment, that is to deduct three provided affordable senior and add them to the commercial number in blue, the 387. In this case, when you use the gross versus the net, you come up actually as 39 spaces under. So that was the application that we reviewed. And actually, the planning commission didn't review this, but the council did and approved it on 8-1. Then we have varying versions of what we've seen on this application. Ms. Dodson provided an analysis in text form that I translated into the spreadsheet that shows required, provided, and over/under. And I came up with 23 under in that analysis. The applicant has now modified the, their application with an Exhibit A, which is inconsistent with other materials that they provided. And if you could maybe zoom out a little bit so we can see the green boxed area. I believe the correct number, and that's what I stated in my opening, is that when you look at the requirement, the requirement is 323. And that puts the total required at 392 and an underage of 73. I want to explain that. But I also want to just comment that if you slide over a little more on the spreadsheet, you can see that even if the 285 were used, which I don't think is correct, but they were both in the application that was submitted, so they're inconsistent with each other, they would still be 35 under in total. So now maybe you could go to the bottom of the spreadsheet, the numbers that are there. So actually, just go down a little bit more. I want to, I want to just describe one other thing I did. Is I tried to do a sanity check, and if you look right in the middle in the red boxes, it shows that between the approved A and S on August 1st and the modification on 9-23, the square footage of what was requested decreased a bit. I believe they have not providing some of the restaurant or there's been a reconfiguration of the market hall. And so there was a change of about 8%. But the required parking in the application that they prevented, presented on 8-26, they said required 285. And then they reduced it on 9-23 to 204. And so that's a 28% increase, and that's the sanity check that I looked at. And I said, this isn't just about not providing spaces that they might have wanted to for some future use. This is about a drastic reduction in what they are saying is required between the application they submitted on, that we reviewed on 8-26-2020, that had that 285 number in it, and what we reviewed on 9-23-2020. Now, if you could kind of go to the bottom of the spreadsheet. Keep going to the next page, please. And again, okay, that's good. So if you look at, just go up slightly here. Just want to be able, yeah, okay. So this is an analysis of the requirements as I read them. The, the application that was submitted and deemed complete on 8-1-17 by a group of applicants said that there would be, they've now reduced it slightly to 20,760 square feet for the market and 2,772 square feet for the community room. And those are based on current, based on current downtown requirements. That would yield 70 spaces for the market hall and 39, I'm sorry, and five spaces for the community room. However, the retail, restaurant and bar tavern that are part of the, what we've, what is approved, that is what was deemed complete and approved, is for 24,006,11, 12,591 and 2,906 square feet for other commercial outside of the market hall. And that results in 83, 126 and 39 spaces for a total of 248. And so when you add 75 in the market hall and 248 outside, you come up with 323. And so on that, that's the basis that I've used for calculating the, the, what's in the upper spreadsheet that I marked as correct. There are a number of other issues and inconsistencies in the material that we've been presented with. But I wanted to maybe just pause here, see whether there were questions of this part of it.
Commissioner Hudes, I thank you for all the analysis you've done. But I'm gonna, I can't speak for the rest of the commission, but I know for me personally, for me to be able to absorb all this information, I would need a lot more time than the five minutes that we've been given to look at it. And I also think we would need to give staff a fair opportunity to respond because they're saying that they are in compliance. And so in order for me to make a finding that your logic is correct, I would want to hear from staff after they had a chance to review their materials. So that's, that's my feedback, that's my feedback. But you know, I do see that you've put a lot of time and effort into this. But again, I couldn't possibly really do this without spending quite a bit of time looking through the numbers and seeing, you know, that made sense. And I would also want staff to do the same thing. So I don't know, other commissioners have questions?
I do, I have my hand raised.
Vice Chair Jennings.
Thank you. Commissioner Hudes, question for you. I'm looking at the, at the spreadsheet and I see that in a restaurant and bar tavern on both the, both examples, you're still using the 100, the 1 to 100 parking ratio or the 1 to 75 parking ratio. So it's, it's counting seats, not the current, the current code, which is 1 to 300. And if you take that into consideration, that 126 anyway under the restaurant would be reduced by two-thirds, which significantly reduces the 323. Can you comment on why your spreadsheet doesn't use the current requirement, which is what staff has said is applicable at this time?
Sure, and you know, the simple reason is that we're not looking at a modification on that part of the application. We're looking at a modification to the market hall. And so if you look at the one that is, that has the blue 20760, that's what complies with current. There's no conceivable reason why the rest of the application that was deemed complete and approved would not use the code that existed at the time when it was deemed complete. If there were a modification request or if there were an application for those things, they could be considered. Perhaps the code might be different at that time.
That's my understanding, excuse me, it's my understanding that the restaurant, which is approximately 13,000 square feet, is in the market hall. So the 1 to 300 ratio for the project before us should apply, should it not?
I believe that there is an elimination of the restaurant and that the market hall, so there was, I believe, restaurant in the market hall and restaurant outside. The, the large part of it is outside. The 13,000 square feet is in buildings A, B, 2, C, buildings that are not in the market hall. There was, I believe, about a 2,000 square foot area of restaurant in the market hall itself.
But even so, if we're adhering to current code, whether it's in the market hall, I mean, these numbers don't reflect only the market hall. You're talking about the whole, the whole commercial area. So we, I believe, should be using the 1 to 300. I, I, I'm not clear on the rationale for using what is not currently code or what wouldn't be, presumably code won't change between now and when permits are issued. I'm, I, the, the way I see it is these numbers are overstated, which is consistent with the initial sheet A dot 11. And the subsequent clarifications were provided with the, with the current code of 1 to 300. So I, I, from my understanding, I don't believe this information is accurate, that what we're looking at right now.
Well, again, I would say that we're not looking at a modification for any other buildings. The only application in front of us now is for one building. And I think that you can, you can decide whether you should apply current code or code at the time when the application was approved for that. But even if you do, there's no, there is no application, there is no correspondence that says that the restaurants won't be built and that they have to be modified from the parking that was required from them and made part of this application only three weeks ago.
So I'm still confused because my understanding from everything staff has said is that the requirement for parking will be calculated based on the plans under review for permit, not based on the proposal from, from before. So how would we hold, you know, if I'm building a house and I decide to change the square footage, why would I be held to something that was previously agreed to when my plans are changing? I, I would.
To, to be clear.
Because this hasn't been permanent yet.
We, we are only looking at an application for the market hall. So the, the balance of it must be consistent with the approved application for it. And the approved application for it says that they're going to require, they're going to need, you know, a total of 248 spaces for that. The applicant themselves said that they don't know exactly what's going to be put there, but they put forth 3 dot 31, I'm sorry, 3 dot 22 in their application on 8-26, representing that that was what was required. I don't believe they have any way that they can represent those buildings because their application is not for those buildings. There was an approval of an A and S for those buildings.
So, so Commissioner Hughes, I can't see the whole screen right now because I have, I have part of our zoom up and everything and I was trying to move it around a little bit. But let's just, I want to take one thing at a time. So are you saying that the applicant doesn't have enough parking for the market hall?
I'm saying that when we evaluate the market hall, as the town attorney said, we have to evaluate it in the context of the parking for the Phase One, not as a standalone.
I asked a question, are you saying, suggesting that the market hall is not in compliance? And then I'll take the other.
Yes, market hall is not in compliance when you look at the total requirements for the Phase One application.
So I want to go back to, so I think we need to, we're gonna end up having to go back and talk to staff about this. But I mean, my, my understanding was that, that, that the market hall itself is in compliance. And, and then everything else is an estimate that we don't really know yet because they don't have developers for those other commercial pads. And there's an estimate based on, you know, because they are building the pads for them, but until a commercial developer comes in, we're not really gonna know. And then I would also echo, you know, Vice Chair Daniels' comments that, you know, whatever, if we're going to try and go down this path of looking at the whole thing holistically, it should be accurately reflecting the standard that they're gonna be held to for restaurants, which is, was changed a couple of years ago. So, so I guess that, that's where I would stand on the thing is that I'm not, I'm not 100% certain that, that the direction we got from staff was that we should look at the whole thing because we don't have proposals for the rest of the commercial yet. But maybe we can ask that of staff. But let me see if any other commissioners have questions on what you've presented so far.
Could I just perhaps go back to the gallery view, take this spreadsheet off so we can see everyone? I can't see most of you. Thank you.
Okay, so do other commissioners have questions of the analysis that Commissioner Hudes provided? And if not, I will, I'm going to ask staff if they could comment on how we should look at this. Because if I, if I'm interpreting this correctly, that the issue that is on the table is that, that if we look at our best guess right now, they are, according to Commissioner Hudes' analysis, they will be short on parking holistically for the transition district, even though they might not be for the market hall itself. And so, and so if we could prove that, that there's, there must, there would be an objective standard that says what, what that parking would be. But I'm trying to understand from staff's perspective. So, Commissioner Hughes, before you talk, I just wanted to ask, hear from staff.
So ultimately, I think the town attorney mentioned earlier, I think where Mr. Hudes's analysis is going is that he's looking at the market hall parcel individually. So that would be only the market hall, the community room and the senior affordable. So like, I don't see his table, but I believe it's 74 for market hall when you're looking at the community space and market hall, and then another 50 for the residential, which is 124. And the parking garage provides 176. But I know there was a lot more analysis that Mr. Huedes did. I'm just taking you down to that specific question.
Thank you. I so and I know you weren't finished presenting, so go ahead, Commissioner Hughes.
I just wanted to clarify. I'm not suggesting that we look at the market hall by itself. You cannot. The market hall must comply with the parking requirements for the Phase One. I'm sorry, with with the entire specific plan. And and actually, the market hall is in the transition district. And it although the application is for the application is for a single building, the application has to be in compliance with the specific plan. And the specific plan is for the entire 44 acres. It is broken into districts. And the modifications to the market hall must be in compliance with the transition district, which is where it is. And there are other buildings in the transition district. So we have to look at the requirements for the market hall in the context of the transition district. I hope that clarifies.
It definitely clarifies. I think from my standpoint, it's once you look at the entire transition district, that's where staff comes up with their numbers because we use the 1 per 300. We no longer use the 1 per 100 or 1 per 75. So I'm not sure if the town attorney has an additional input on that component. But I think he'll also say that if the commission disagrees with that, that's perfectly fine. You can make that part of your findings, and we can move forward from there.
I think that's correct. You guys are doing exactly what you're supposed to be doing. You're deliberating, and these are objective standards and how you implement those. My only concern is, as I said in the earlier, if you look at your, the the graph that's been provided, you do base your, you say, based on 8117 requirements. And you and you do need to base it on your current regulations that apply to this modification. And and it's the same as if you came in with, your home was built five years ago, and you want to do a remodel for it, we would not apply the modification that was in effect five years ago. We would look at the new regulations, whether that was setbacks, whether that was your garage driveway. And in some incidents, and let's let's say, instead of this going where you're using the 100, let's say we took retail down to 100, so it was not to the benefit. In this case, when we redid our parking a few years ago, it is to the benefit of the applicant in this case. But if it'd been the other way, and it had been to not to the detriment of the applicant, and it was requiring more parking, we wouldn't, the applicant wouldn't be able to sit here and say, I want to apply the old standards. And so that's the issue I'm having is this, you need to apply the parking universally as to it now exists and not half as it exists and half as it doesn't.
Okay, and so Commissioner Hughes, Vice Chair Danoff had her hand up before you did. So I was gonna just see if she had a comment, and then I'll go back to you.
Yeah, thanks. I think what the town attorney is describing is the issue I have with Commissioner Huedes's calculations. I I can see that the current matter before us, just the market hall parcel, is consistent with providing a surplus of parking. And if we take the entire district into consideration, then we must apply the current standards to that, even though the numbers that the applicant provided were a different standard. So I, you know, we can't, we can't have it both ways. We either consider the market hall on its own to today's standards and for staff, they they and for the calculations, we we see that they they meet and exceed the parking requirements. But if we're going to broaden it to include the other parcels, we have to apply the same criteria. Otherwise, we have an inconsistent basis upon which we're making this conclusion.
Thank you, Vice Chair Danoff, Commissioner Huedes.
I I believe I asked the question before that this is an application for a modification to the market hall. And that there is an approved application that was approved on 812017 for those other buildings. And that's why I'm using the numbers for those other buildings that were approved. If there were, if there were applications for modification to those other buildings, I would say we might find that there are other numbers that might apply. But that's not before us. What's before us is the market hall. It has to fit with the requirements of the specific plan. And there is an existing A and S application that's been approved that is not being requested to be modified, and that's for those other buildings.
Vice Chair Danoff.
I don't want to monopolize the commissioners' time if there are other questions. But again, my understanding is that the numbers are estimates only. And once those applications come forward to planning, there's an approved architecture and site application, but the actual building permits haven't been approved. And when they are considered, those building permits will be considered under current code. It may change in the future when those are considered. But if if we're applying today's standards, then we have to, we have to consider that that number is that that the 1 to 300 ratio must be for the entire district. I I I just, I think we're we're really running down a very inconsistent and not a well rational, not not, it doesn't make sense to me to do, consider one one way and another another way when you want to combine them, but you want to keep them separate. I I think that's not consistent.
No, thank you for your comments, and I agree, Commissioner Huedes.
I would like to move on, but I would not characterize anyone's comments as well thought out or not. I'm simply trying to apply what is been approved and what is being asked to be modified. I have some other issues with the application that I'd like to mention. The Exhibit A table doesn't distinguish between residential and commercial parking on the for provided parking. It's not clear whether the needs for residential and commercial will be met. The, while the application on Exhibit A represents gross square footage, the other table that was provided and used represents net square footage. And that does not meet the Code of Ordinances. And I'm not referring to the market hall. I'm referring to the other buildings. The other consistent inconsistency is that the parking requirements that were noted on 3 dot 22, which is part of this application still, it's not these things haven't been reconciled. It does not round up the parking spaces as is required by the Code of Ordinances. So it, the 2910150B requires rounding up to the next whole number for each of the each of the uses. The other information is that 322 is inconsistent with Exhibit A, and they have to be consistent. If the applicant wants to move forward with the parking proposed on Exhibit A, then the application for the rest of Phase One has to be revised so that they are consistent. Otherwise, a new application is required. And with the applicant offering different numbers between on this app, this application for modification between August 26, and then they also submitted a letter dated 3132020 as part of this application with inconsistent numbers and information. It includes a bakery and different square footage for the commercial use. These things are inconsistent with each other. And in light of that, I find that I can't evaluate whether these are consistent with our objective standards. I would, I've never seen an application where the applicant puts in new numbers and then doesn't reconcile or explain while the old numbers don't apply. We are still left with exhibits from 826 that are inconsistent. So I I would suggest, I mean, there are ways to resolve this. We could try to make a decision on the fly. Perhaps staff could develop a chart. But since staff has not provided a chart of their own, they've simply forwarded the applicant's chart to us. When discrepancies were pointed out by the public, then I would suggest another alternative would be to have an independent auditor look and count these spaces. You know, there's been no reconciliation about whether there are 155 external spaces or 143. I counted 150. There are many inconsistencies with what's in front of us. And I can't see how we can make a finding that this is consistent with the objective standards with the number of inconsistencies in the material that's been put in front of us. And these inconsistencies, by the way, have been pointed out by the public. And they're they're obvious. They're staring us. And that's why I spent so much time trying to reconcile things. But but there are still inconsistencies in the documents that we're being asked to decide on.
Commissioner Badami, Commissioner Badami, and then, yeah, go ahead.
So I I actually like the idea of an independent auditor doing a study. I'm looking at the original conditions of approval for this project. And under condition number 162, it talks about future studies. And it says, any post-project traffic, parking counts, air quality studies, or other studies imposed by planning commissioner town council shall be funded by the applicant. So I would go for a, an independent study if a motion passes by the majority of the planning commission to order such one.
Thank you for your comments. I I as far as the issue, so so thank you to Ms. Dodson for writing up a very detailed and a couple of different letters with a lot of analysis and everything. Now, you, it was my understanding that the applicant, I mean, it was in our, the denim or the desk item. The the applicant has responded to address what the perceived inconsistencies were between that and that. The applicant hasn't had a chance to look at your document, Commissioner Huedes, to be able to respond to that. And and I think that there's enough, there there's enough disagreement about whether or not we should be adjusting this thing to the current code, which we are using restaurants based on the 300 square footage. So I'm I'm kind of, I'm in a situation where I, I mean, I I I see that the commissioners are torn on where to go with this thing. So I think we're going to have to to do something, but I would like to hear from the other commissioners. Commissioner Tavanna.
I would have to agree in general with a lot of what Commissioner Huedes said and with the recommendation by Commissioner Badami about implementing an independent study of sorts. I'm of the opinion parking standards are a baseline and should be considered on a case by case basis, even more so with the large development project. I have serious concerns about traffic flow, circulation as a result of this project in general, but especially with the reduction of even more parking. So I think an independent study stating the reduced parking will not have an impact on the health, the safety of the residents and showing that there is enough parking for this particular project, even though we do meet current standards with the parking requirements.
So I just, you know, you probably want to think about reopening it for the applicant. I can't imagine we're going to do an independent study if we were sitting here talking about 45 spaces differential, and they still met the requirements. I think we'd be having the same conversation. Ultimately, I mean, this, we we can't keep continuing the item. It sounds like there are concerns of the commission. That's pretty clear. So I think it's important that we, you know, take the comments into consideration and decide whether or not there's enough evidence from your standpoint to take an action. And then I defer to the town attorney if he has any additional input on that component.
I agree in that, you know, we've we've continued this three times, and the applicant is entitled to a decision. You could open up the public hearing for the sole purpose to see if if the applicant would want a a continuance to do an independent review of the parking. It would not be as to whether the circulation or whether there's a public health and safety issue or the the issues raised by commissioners. It would only be, again, of whether they meet our parking regulations. That's really what the objective standard is. It is our, it's not a minimum that you can apply on a case by case basis. That's not the way land use decisions work. But if you wanted to do that, you could open it for that. Otherwise, I believe there's evidence in the record for either a motion to approve or a motion to deny based on the parking regulations that have been provided to you through Ms. Dobson and through Mr. Huedes, if that's the the will of the commission.
Okay, so so I I I do think that the applicant has done a lot to address the questions of Ms. Dodson. And like I said, he hasn't had a chance to look at the the documents from Commissioner Huedes, nor have we. I think it would be prudent to bring the applicant back. And I I concur with the town attorney's comment that we we're not, we're not in a position to go back and reopen this thing and say, is this thing going to have an impact? That we're not doing an environmental impact report, basically, is what, you know, was suggested. And this has to be only whether or not they're in compliance with, if we go down this route, it can only be about whether their numbers add up in terms of what our standards are today. Vice Chair Danoff.
Thank you. I too developed my own spreadsheet, Commissioner Huedes, with the purpose of not not trying to track the the logic and and numbers that Ms. Dodson provided, which we we all agree is an exhaustive and interesting study. I went back to the numbers on A dot 11, pulled the actual square footage, ran it through a couple of different scenarios to come up with what seems to be the required square footage. I'm convinced that any way we look at these numbers, whether it, whether we have an independent auditor come in or or we have staff go back and and confirm numbers on on the the entire district with the applicant. Based on my calculations, using the 1 to 300 current code, they made it. And in one scenario, they proposed 300 and provide 331. In another, they provide proposed 198, and they're still at 311 or 331. And in the final one, Exhibit A, they're proposing 270 required, sorry, required 272, and they're proposing 319. Any way I look at it, and and mind you, I really want as much parking as we can possibly get. But if there's still, I'm trying to be super conservative and say, listen, according to the numbers that they're providing for the for the gross square footage, they're still over the entire, over the, over the district, they're over the required number of parking spaces. We can go back and run the numbers again and again. I don't believe they're going to come up with any any different answer. I'm not in favor of an independent analysis. I I I think we've got the information in front of us. If we choose to think of it according to the current code, I I would be prepared to make a motion. But we haven't heard from all the commissioners yet.
All right. So thank you, Vice Chair Danoff, Commissioner Barnett.
I spent a tremendous amount of time looking at the numbers. Like Mr. Huedes, I'm confused. I don't think I can make a decision on a matter of this importance without having a reconciliation by an independent auditor or CPA.
Okay, so I I guess I I have a, I have an issue that is bothering me. I I think I have confidence in our staff to look at the numbers. And and to me, the the issue that that we have is is what standard and to me, the, the issue that, that we have is, is what standard we're applying when, and, and whether or not we hold them accountable for the entire, including the estimated parking of the transition district, because I didn't, I haven't heard anything that said that they aren't going to meet the numbers for the market hall. And so, and as far as the rest of it, again, it's estimates, and so I, I think I, I don't mind having another look at this, although I'm, I'm conscious of not dragging this out for the applicant. But, you know, I, I, I think we have to think about, an independent auditor seems like a bit much. I have confidence in our staff to look at this if it's the will of the commission to, to have one more look at the numbers. But I, I think it's a lot to ask. Having said that, I'm, I don't have a problem with reopening the hearing to hear from the applicant. And then we, maybe we can go from there. Is there, I don't think anyone on the commission hasn't commented at this point, so is Mr. Keeney still here?
I will look to see if they're interested in speaking, hold on one second. Now, he does have his hand up.
Okay, Mr. Keeney.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner Hanson, and members of the commission, we appreciate you taking the time to consider this. You know, this is our fourth hearing now. You know, we're ready to start construction on this building, we really don't see the need for additional delays. The application was originally contemplated based on coordination with staff for market hall alone. If you look at our letter of justification, which is the original application, those numbers have not changed. It's, you know, a hundred and twenty-four parking spaces required, a hundred and seventy-six provided. That hasn't changed throughout the entire process. As the process evolved, it's accurate to say that we were asked to start to look at some of the other districts, or the other properties in the district, and we've done what we could to clarify that. I realize that it's confusing, but exhibit A is something that we prepared in coordination with stuff and with them. I think that they will tell you that it's an accurate reflection if you make the assumption that the gross square footage for buildings A1, A2, B2, and C1 are based on sheet three point two-two from the architectural and site approval. And we don't know exactly what those square footages will be, so to Commissioner Janoff's point, those might shift a little bit, and they'll have to comply with the code when they are submitted. But those are as accurate as we could get at this time, based on the information available and using the current required code requirement for the parking ratio of one per three hundred. So I don't see the need for an audit. While there's a lot of numbers, once you get it distilled down and, and clearly identify the source of those pieces of information, I think all the data is there, and I think staff, as Commissioner Hanson said, is more than capable of analyzing that. So we would not, we would prefer a decision this evening and would not liken a continuance if it can be.
Okay. Well, I, so based on, based on what I heard, and, and I'm, you know, feel free to add in comments from the, the other, the rest of the commission can make additional comments. My, my assessment of where the commission stands right now is that I, I believe Commissioner, Vice Chair Janoff and I both are comfortable with the numbers more than the rest of the commission is, and I, I heard some concerns from every other commissioner besides us. So we could, we could try to make a motion and see if, if given the comments that have been made by staff and the applicant, that the rest of the commission could get comfortable. We could also have somebody, a commissioner, if they feel like they're comfortable making the findings for a denial with an objective standard, we, that's certainly an option we can put forth. Or the third option is we could continue it with a motion to do some kind of follow-up based on the numbers that Commissioner Hudes provided. So I'm, I'm going to put those out there as options, and I don't know if anybody has a strong feeling about it, but I, you know, I was hoping we could get to some kind of decision tonight. All right, so I'm not, okay, Commissioner Hudes.
No, I, I'll wait, but otherwise I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay, well, I think Vice Chair Janoff was also prepared to make a motion, but, you know, we can, we can go, we can go ahead. Vice Chair Janoff, you had said first that you were going to make a motion. And so do you, do you want to have Commissioner Hudes make his motion, or do, do you want to go ahead with yours? You're on, you're a mute.
Thank you. My motion would be a motion to approve this project based on the comments I've already made. I don't believe that motion would pass, given the concerns of the other commissioners. And so I will defer my motion to one that Commissioner Hudes would make.
Okay, I think that's fine. So Commissioner Hudes, if you'd like to make a motion, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I have no idea where this is going to go, but I want to make sure all of the points are on the record. So I would move to deny architecture and site application, the mod, the application to modify op application S one three zero nine zero. And I can, because I cannot make the required finding that the project complies with the North Forty specific plan, exhibit two, and I cannot find that the project meets considerations as required by section twenty-nine twenty-one fifty of the town code for granting approval of an architecture and site application. And the reason for that is that the North Forty specific plan for the transition district requires three hundred and ninety-two spaces for the submitted application. Eliminating the underground parking will eliminate one hundred and twenty-seven spaces, leaving three hundred and nineteen, which is seventy-three spaces less than what is required by the specific plan. Therefore, the application does not meet the requirements of the specific plan. And I believe these are all objective standards. In addition, there are other reasons why it doesn't meet the North Forty specific plan and the general plan. First of all, the application in front of us is inconsistent with itself, and the numbers that have been provided have inconsistencies and cannot be evaluated on that basis. The inconsistencies that I would point out are the provided outside parking spaces, the use of documents that contain net leasable area versus gross square footage, the failure to round up the numbers as required by law. I would also say that the it's, I've already covered that they're inconsistent, that three of the senior affordable spaces are not secured, although the applicant has stated that they will be secured and that security is required in order to meet the requirements of the plan. And I would also comment in support of that, that the application has to be evaluated in the context of the specific plan and in the context of the A and S application of August one twenty seventeen that's approved. And that the Housing Accountability Act, if it in fact applies because of the, to reach the two-thirds housing criteria, then the entire district needs to be used for the parking evaluation. And there's also another question that I have that's not part of the findings, but that is something that I think would need to be looked at, and that is whether the EIR is applicable and whether the project meets sequel requirements. As the TIA portion of the EIR, which does talk about parking, was analyzed with the twenty seventeen parking ordinance, not with the current ordinance. So we don't know whether the EIR is being met with the, the application for that portion that would follow current law. So that's my motion.
All right, is there a second?
Second motion.
So Commissioner Barnett has seconded the motion. Is, are there any comments by commissioners before we vote on the motion? I'm gonna, I'm gonna comment that, that I'm not comfortable with the denial. I, 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 I think that we're talking about apples and oranges in some cases with the numbers. And I, I don't agree with the, having a look at the IR. I think that, that any scenario, I agree with Vice Chair Janoff, that any scenario we look at, that if you're using the current code with the restaurant parking, which is what we would hold them to, or any other applicant, that they would still meet the parking requirements. Having said that, I'm, I'm not opposed to having another look at the numbers, but I'm not comfortable with that there's evidence to deny it, so I will be voting against the motion. Vice Chair Janoff.
Thank you, and I echo the, the comments of the chair. I'm, I'm comfortable having run through the numbers, I think it was the intent of the applicant to be clear in his, in the exhibits that were put forward. They were also reviewed by staff. I, I think that I agree with the apples to oranges comment, but I think the apples to oranges comment that we're, we're struggling with has to do with the ratio of parking requirements being inconsistent, and I think that when it comes down to the actual application, once it gets in front of the permitting body in the future, we will see that there's sufficient parking being provided. So I will not be supporting the motion.
Are there any other comments before we take a vote? Okay, seeing none, I will go do a roll call vote, and I will start with Commissioner Badami.
Yes.
And Commissioner Barnett?
Yes.
Commissioner Tavanna?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudes?
Yes.
Vice Chair Janoff?
No.
And I vote no as well. So the motion passes, I'm four to two. Dr. Paulson, are there appeal rights for this motion?
Thank you, Chair, there are appeal rights. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the planning commission can appeal the decision to the town council. Forms are available online. The appeal must be filed within ten days, and there is a fee for filing the appeal.
Okay, thank you. We do, thank you commissioners, and thank you to everyone in the public for testifying and providing their comments. We do have one more item on the agenda. I'm going to suggest, because it has been two hours and twenty minutes, that we take a five-minute break before we consider item three. So let's see, it's nine twenty-three, let's come back by nine thirty, it's a little bit more than five minutes. Okay? And then we're just waiting for Commissioner Hudes to get on video. Okay. So I think we've got everybody? Yep, okay, all right. So, Dr. Paulson, are we ready to resume?
I believe we are.
Okay. So, having finished item two, we are now ready to move on to item three, which is discuss and provide direction on potential modifications to the Hillside Development Standards and Guidelines Regarding Visibility. In this case, the town is the applicant. So the staff report will be the applicant statement as well. It is my understanding that we are to make a recommendation on the proposed language for elevation, and then provide direction on trees to be included, as well as the deciding body, as both of these items had a split vote by the Policy Committee. And I'm hoping staff will explain a little bit more detail. It was in our staff report as well. So Ms. Schubman, I understand you are also giving the report for this item?
Good evening, I am. So in front of you is a consideration of modification to chapters two, three, and nine of the Hillside Development Standards and Guidelines Regarding the Visibility Analysis, as recommended by the Council Policy Committee and forwarded to you for your recommendation to the council. The recommendation from the committee proposes to make the two following changes. Define an elevation for the purposes of a visibility analysis in chapter two, and update an image in chapter three to comply with the amended defensible space zones. The committee had a split vote regarding the following three potential modifications. Whether existing trees or branches subject to clearing and what's known as zones two and three should be included in a visibility analysis. And whether existing trees that meet the exception as part of chapter 29 of the town code for removal without a permit, but are proposed to remain as part of an application should be included in a visibility analysis. And lastly, whether the deciding body for a visible home that meets the allowable floor area ratio and maximum allowable height of 18 feet should be allowed to be approved by the Development Review Committee as opposed to the current requirement for Planning Commission approval. This concludes staff's presentation. We are available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Schubman. Do any commissioners have questions for staff? Commissioner Hudes?
I think I know the answer, but are these for consideration by the Planning Commission? Are these one monolithic unit? Or is the Planning Commission able to separate the several changes that are being requested?
So Commissioner Hughes, it was my intent, and I discussed it with the Vice Chair, to consider these as three separate motions. Because it's entirely possible that people would have differing opinions, just like council did on any one of them. So it was my intent to separate it into three different motions.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioners have questions for staff before we move to public comments? All right, seeing none?
That was just me.
Okay. So we will now move to the public comments portion of the hearing. Do we have any members of the public that would like to speak on this item? For anyone that does, we ask you to leave, leave your comments, limit your comments to three minutes, and you may choose to state your name and, and/or your address, or you can speak anonymously, knowing that we will be recording this meeting for the public record. So do we have anyone that wants to speak in public comments?
We do. Dr. Westman has his hand up. I'm gonna allow him to speak.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Thank you. If you find agenda item, agenda item number three confusing, I completely understand and hope my comments will be helpful. Item number one on agenda on elevation is straightforward and was supported by the Policy Committee. Items two through four concern what vegetation can count as screening and visibility studies. Now, hillside homeowners generally want to see valley lights. How do I know? Just look at how realtors advertise hillside homes for sale. In contrast, flatlanders prefer to look at tree-covered hillsides and not see lots of light nighttime light pollution and daytime reflective window glare. Our hillside guidelines have, quote, "taken the side of flatlanders." Native hillside trees are protected. Trees providing screening now have deed restrictions against their removal, and if removed, those trees must be replaced. Yard lights must shine down. Window reflectivity is considered, et cetera. But in a situation of fire, not all trees are equal. Hence the basis for my proposed compromise. Both council members, Specter and Jensen, agreed that all trees and branches required to be removed, removed by our new 2020 Defensive Space Ordinance shall not count invisibility calculations. Their disagreement related to those trees removed for defensive space. I believe that non-hillside trees, which in many cases are extremely flammable, non-native hillside trees, which in many cases are extremely flammable, think eucalyptus, should be removed in the interest of defensible space and ecological health. These trees should not be counted as providing screening, even if the developer says that they will be retained. Because when a house is sold, whether it be in one week or 10 years, the new owner can then remove the entire tree without permits or replacement. In contrast, native trees such as oaks, which are fire resistant, should be protected, would be still protected under our tree ordinance and should be counted as provided screening. I believe adoption of this dichotomy would address the concerns expressed by both council members, Jensen and Specter. And should you agree to support these changes related to native versus non-native trees, then for consistency, the deed restriction clause in the Hillside Standards on page 14, category H, should be amended to only apply to native trees that are protected under section 29-10-0970, subcategory three of the Tree Protection Ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Do any commissioners have questions for Dr. Westman? Commissioner Hudes?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Westman, for your comments and also for all the work that you've done on this. Is there any gray area on the, on the trees? Is it very clear as to, in your proposal, what would be permitted and what wouldn't be permitted to be removed?
If one separates native trees like oaks, which are pretty straightforward, from non-native trees, which are in that list, or just non-native trees in general, I think it's, I think it's pretty clear. I think getting rid of non-native trees, which we have been encouraging in the Tree Protection Ordinance for years, because they improve the ecological health, and now in the context of fire prevention, it's just frosting on the cake. I think there's a very clear dichotomy there.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners have questions for Dr. Westman? Okay, are there, so Director Paulson, are there any other members of the public that would like to speak on this item?
Thank you, Chair. Let me take a look. So would anyone else in the attendees like to speak on this item? I don't see anyone else raising their hand, Chair.
Okay. All right, with that in mind, we will, we will. I don't, I'm gonna ask a question of staff. I don't need to ask the town staff to come back up and, and respond, even though you're the applicant, right?
That's correct. We're just here to answer questions at this point.
Okay. So I will close the public portion of the hearing, and then we will move to our commissioner deliberations. And so, as I, so, so this is a time for you to ask question, any further questions of staff? Or make comments, or make a motion? The way I'd like to do this is to consider each of the three topics separately. So maybe we could start with, with the definition of elevation. So if I am recapping this correctly, the, the Policy Committee made a, a proposed definition of elevation. The proposed language is on, I had it on page 14 of my packet. But there's, the language is already defined. They did agree on it. So I want to put that out to commissioners and see if there's any comments or suggestions or to modify the language, or if you think that that's captures what is important for the definition of elevation. So any comments, Vice Chair Janoff?
Yeah, thank you. You know, I agree that what they have is, is needed to be included, but my question has to do with retaining walls that may be at the front or the visible elevation. We've looked at some applications recently for hillside development that have pretty massive retaining walls. And now the, the town consulting architect is recommending plantings that would screen those retaining walls. But if the application of the applicant doesn't plant anything, we still, we're still are looking at something that, that would read from an observer as part of the, part of the front elevation or part of the visible elevation. So I, my, my question is whether or not we should include visible retaining walls as part of the, the definition of elevation.
Could I ask staff, since I assume you were present at the Policy Committee meetings, was this discussed by the council members that formulated this definition? And did they decide to not include retaining walls, or was it not discussed?
This was by the Policy Committee at their multiple meetings, and the ultimate conclusion was not to include them. In one specific case, they were looking at it might give an advantage to an applicant to include retaining walls, as opposed to just looking at the building elevation itself. And based on that input, they chose not to include exterior features, specifically calling out retaining walls.
Interesting, okay. I would have thought it would have been the opposite. Any other comments on the language by commissioners? Do, do you, what do you, what does the commission feel about? Should retaining walls be considered as part of the elevation? Or should we go with the Policy Committee's direction? Commissioner Burge?
I think we should go with the Policy Committee's recommendation. Perhaps the only comment to that would be that obviously it may be matter on what the retaining wall was made of. If it is a natural stone facade or something that would actually blend in with the natural landscape, you know, I, I think it makes clear sense that it wouldn't be included. If by any chance they were proposing something that didn't meet the landscape, perhaps we would look at that differently. However, I would assume that staff would catch that before it even came to us. But I would, you know, defer to other commissioners if they felt like we should add a language in there around the materials.
And through the chair, I would just add that, as Ms. Schubman said, they had a lot of conversations about this. A member of the public brought it up and said it shouldn't be used over and over. And so they ultimately decided not to include it. It's, again, as Ms. Schubman said, you have some instances where it potentially helps an applicant from a calculation perspective, and then you could have other items, as you're talking about, that actually would hurt the applicant. So they chose to only include the building. And so that's what we brought forward as our recommendation. And so through a motion, if you want them to consider that or consider portions of that, I think that could be added into your motion as direction as this specific item goes forward.
Do other commissioners, thank you, Dr. Paulson. Do other commissioners have comments on the idea about the retaining walls? Commissioner Barnett? You're on mute.
I may be missing something here, but it seems to me that the definition is intended to tie into the visibility analysis. And from that perspective, I would think that walls, decks, and exterior detached structures should all be considered as part of the elevation.
So including the retaining walls?
Correct.
Okay.
And just, yes, I guess I would just offer a little more background. The whole reason this came forward was an application on, I want to say, Centella that came before, and staff had actually looked at walls and things like that because they can be visible. And in this case, I think it, it turned out that it may have helped the applicant on the visibility analysis. And so then that's when the council sent this item back to Policy Committee for consideration, just so that staff could get clear direction on what we should be counting in the visibility analysis. And this is where they landed.
Thank you, Director Paulson. Vice Chair Janoff?
Yeah, just a question, clarification for staff. Are you, are you suggesting that, I'm trying to figure out how the, the inclusion would, would help? And I guess what that would say is there's a greater square footage. I, I, I'm confused about what, how that would. You know, if you could walk through this example, I maybe would better understand why the recommendation is going in this direction.
It wasn't the project manager on the Centella application, but I continue my best to kind of give a background. And I believe in this case, it was multiple retaining walls downhill that were included in this visibility analysis. So it created a larger square footage amount that the application was working with, the applicant was working for computing his calculation. And by including that additional square footage of retaining walls that were visible, it resulted in the project being under that threshold of 25%.
Commissioner Hudes?
Thank you. Coming back to Commissioner Burge's question, question for staff, how, how likely is it that we're going to get retaining wall that isn't a natural compatible material on the hillside applications? And also, would there be any existing retaining wall that wouldn't be of that type, that would be part of the consideration here?
Well, we have seen some more contemporary and modern homes on our hillsides. I believe one was approved on Centella Court, actually, by the commission in either 2018 or 2019. It was more of a contemporary style. It did have some concrete walls, although they also had landscaping to soften that material. But that was reviewed by the Towns Consulting Architect with the Hillside Design Guidelines and found to be compliant. As far as you're saying, if there's existing retaining walls, whether they can be included in a visibility analysis?
Yes, I, my comments were strictly about the retaining walls. You know, I, I remember the, the recent approval. But, but I'm really talking about the materials that are used on the retaining walls, new and existing.
Well, if staff is completing a visibility analysis today... Well, if staff is completing a visibility analysis today, we would be looking at what's visible. So is that the building elevation? Are those existing retaining walls regardless of their material? So this was part of the question for the commission's consideration is, should we still be looking at those visible walls regardless of the material?
If I could just follow up, how, how likely is it that they will be of a non-natural material?
It's a possibility. There are quite a few old structures and retaining walls out there. So I would say that yes, it's a possibility that we could see them.
And I would just add to that, Commissioner Hudes, I mean, natural, I mean, stucco is technically, you know, sand. So, you know, we see a lot of stucco walls, concrete walls. So we see those quite often. Generally, how they're treated in a hillside environment is either by screening, as mentioned by Commissioner Janoff, or by color, to help them blend in.
Thank you.
Okay, so I, I, Vice Chair Janoff?
Yeah, I, I would like to support the notion, the, the addition of language. As Commissioner Burge alluded to, that if, if the material is, the retaining wall is obvious and visible or non-natural, or however you, you might want to phrase it, then it, it could be included in the, in the elevation calculation. I, I, I'm having a little trouble understanding how it could work. A little trouble with the numbers on this one, but I think, I think there could be instances where you'd have a rather obvious retaining wall. I'm thinking about that house. I can't remember the street, but it's the lands of Pam is all I can remember. But it, it's, it was, it was that massive house up on a hillside and there were retaining walls and all kinds of turity, not turity things, but balustrades and stuff. And you're just looking at it going, wow. I, I can't imagine why we would not want to include in that instance the, you know, the retaining wall as part of that calculation.
So I think that was Jared Lane and actually one wasn't visible at all, so that wasn't even an issue. Because it was low enough in the hillside. But that's, that's the challenge, and that's why staff has historically looked at them. In the instance, just for this example, there was another planner, as, as Ms. Schubman mentioned. And so we counted all the retaining wall, and a lot of the retaining wall was screened by existing vegetation. So that added to their total wall square footage for the calculation, which means technically the house could be more visible, or other components could be more visible because they were getting credit for the wall that was screened by vegetation. So that's where the, the challenge comes in. And it, it, it kind of, you know, cuts both ways. So that was the challenge. And you know, there's always going to be items like that, but that's why, you know, we were happy that the council sent it to the policy committee. And so you get clear direction. I think it gets to be challenging if we try to take it, if it's a wall that's visible, then we're going to count it. And if it's not visible, then we're not going to count it. That gets to be problematic from our perspective, looking at that. But whatever the commission wants to put forward is a recommendation to council, then we'll carry that forward for their discussion.
Well, just to follow up, but thank you for that clarification. I now understand it's the difference between what's visible and not visible. And given that, I would think then the language as proposed is probably fine. I would also expect that the consulting architect would provide the guidance for screening or, or color modifications. So.
Yeah. Fair enough. Commissioner Hudes?
Yeah, I would agree with Commissioner Janoff. I think that as it's, as it's written, it would be a perceptible improvement in the way that we're evaluating elevation.
Okay, so, so the way that this works is, is if there are no further comments, we could, we would entertain a motion from a member of the commission. And the motion would be to, to forward a recommendation to council to approve the language as is, or approve it with modifications, or go back to the drawing board. Those, I think, are the three options. I don't think the third option is one we would recommend. So would someone be able to make a motion to either do A or B? Vice Chair Janoff?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the language as is.
Okay. And then Commissioner Hudes had his hand up before Commissioner Badami. And he's on mute. You have to stick yourself up.
Oh, we can lip read.
I second the nomination, the, the, the motion.
Okay, great. Is there any further discussion by the commission on this matter? Seeing none, we will do a roll call vote, and I will start with Commissioner Badami?
Yes.
And then Commissioner Tavanna?
Yes.
Commissioner Burge?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudes?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnett?
No.
Okay, and Vice Chair Janoff?
Yes.
And then I vote yes as well. So it passes six to one. And with Commissioner Barnett voting against, are there any appeal rights for this action by the commission, Director Paulson?
There are not any appeal, because this is a recommendation, as will be the remainder of these motions.
Okay, thank you. All right. So then the, the second item was, was about trees. And is whether or not trees that are subject to required clearing by the fire department, and also trees that don't require a permit to be removed, should be included. And there was a split vote by the policy committee. Vice Mayor Spector felt like we, that we should be more conservative and remove any of these trees that could be removed with, without a permit or by required by the fire department from screening. And, and it's, and I'm interpreting, but but, but the mayor felt that anybody could ultimately remove any tree, so then no one would be able to include them in their analysis. I, I think I characterized the, the way that staff said it, but if I didn't get that right, let us know. So then the, we also heard testimony from Dr. Weisman recommending that we should A, exclude the trees that the fire department would have them, make them they would be required to remove, as well as the non-native trees that aren't protected by the ordinance. And I think that was his recommendation. So what, where does the commission come out on this item? Again, oh, so Commissioner Burge and then Commissioner Hudes?
We had a few discussions along this line previously on hillside applications based on our own walking the site, recognizing which trees had been highlighted to be removed as part of the application, and then trying to determine how that actually lines up with the visibility analysis. And ultimately, in most of those conversations, what we circled back to was that we, we needed to make sure that in understanding which trees were going to be removed, we were doing more of a visibility analysis based on that. What will be the reality? I, I kind of feel like, yes, we, we need to be including the fact that they won't be there in the visibility analysis as, as much as we can to our abilities. I know in some instances, that's very difficult. But in others, we've gone back on an application and actually seen, seeing that the removal of one or two trees in the application had a huge impact on how, how the development would be seen from different viewing points. So yes, I do feel like we should be taking the removal of those trees into consideration.
And through the chair, I would just like to say that the trees are one and the same, but there's really two different components. So the exceptions, those are trees that can be removed without any permit. The first one is the zone one, two, and three. So zone one, they have to remove. Zone two and three, they're not removing all of that vegetation. It's not a clear cutting of the forest. It's a kind of, I can't remember what the term is. I want to say lean and green or clean and green. They're, they're limbing up trees. They're clearing vegetation that, you know, can be a, a fire ladder, things like that. It's not just cutting down the trees. So there are two components of this when you're looking at that. And, and so ultimately, I think they split on both of those issues. But, you know, we have a code that mirrors state code, which is similar to the fire code, which mirrors state code. I've talked to county fire. They're not going out to properties and saying, you have to do this. It's, you know, we're getting more and more inquiries, obviously, given, you know, the continuing news every week that's going on. So those provisions are available to property owners, but it's not just to remove all of those trees. It's really to limb up the ones in the zone two and three and do some other clearing of vegetation. And then with the ones that are on the exception list, you know, those are, those are trees that people could just remove without a permit regardless. So just so everyone understands, there's kind of two separate but linked components.
Okay.
Sorry, I was just to say, thank you for that, because I was a little confused when reading it about how those different things meshed into each other. So, thank you.
All right, so we really kind of have two treaty issues to discuss. I, I think Vice Chair Janoff and then Commissioner Hudes?
Yeah, just wanted to clarify that what Director Paulson is talking about, I have a list of five items. It's the A, B, C, and D that I, I was expecting to walk through. Not the list of three, which were the, the, the decisions that I think Chair Hansen is going through. So I think the, the topic that Chair Hansen was discussing is item C, which is the visibility regarding tree removal. And then what Director Paulson is discussing is item B, which is the the tree clearing that's recommended by the, the fire department. So yeah, we do have two separate items for consideration.
Okay, I, I think you have a good point. So maybe we should do a separate motion on each one?
Yeah.
To make it clear. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you for that clarification, staff, and also Vice Chair Janoff, Commissioner Hudes?
I'm not sure which one it fits into or whatever, but the comments from Dr. Weisman, I would be interested in staff's reaction to that as to whether it makes sense and whether it's feasible to have different conditions for non-native versus native trees, whether they think it's a good idea.
Well, I mean, I think, as he also mentioned, most of these trees in this exception list, which is item C in the staff report, those are all non-native with the exception potentially of three, which is for fire potential, for fire prevention. But I'm not sure if Ms. Schubman has any additional comments. I think that's a fairly simple distinction, as none of the trees in one or two are probably going to be native.
I would agree. We could easily separate native from non-native.
Mr. Hudes?
Do you think it's a good idea?
Well, neither of us are arborists, and we didn't bring the arborist with us. But I think that might be some good direction. Should a motion go forward on, on item C regarding a distinction between native and non-native? And potentially similarly, and well, it gets captured in B by C in and of itself, but that might be helpful direction to have them weigh in on. And we can also get some input from either one of our consulting arborists or a town arborist.
Vice Chair Janoff?
I, I guess I take a little bit different view from Dr. Weisman. And while I completely appreciate where he's going with his thinking with regard to preserving the native trees. And I agree that the native trees need to be discussed in the for visibility analysis, the non-native should absolutely not be required. And here's the reason. It's, it's precisely what Dr. Weisman led with, and that is that people who buy hillside property really want the view. And there's no way to get the view unless you cut your trees down. And I'm not aware that there's a, a follow-up that would hold anyone accountable to, hey, you know, you said you weren't going to cut that tree down, even if it's a native. I mean, you would like to believe that people would want to preserve the native trees, but you can also understand where people say, you know what? That oak tree is right in the middle of my beautiful view. And I, I just want to show you something quickly. This is my view. I'm looking directly across the valley at Levi Stadium. And it's a bigger view than that. When we purchased the property, there were no, there were no trees in our view. So we haven't had to make the decision about cutting down trees. But there's going to be a lot of properties out there that say, great, we got the permit, we got the house built, cut them down. So I, I'm thinking that on the conservative side, we shouldn't include any trees that are on the property that are larger than a certain diameter in the visibility analysis.
All right, so thank you for your direction on that. Are there other comments? So, so just, just to be clear, so I, Vice Chair Janoff did bring up that there are actually, there are actually three, so B, C, and D are all on trees, right? Let me just make sure. Yeah. So B was about regarding trees subject to clearing. And then the exceptions for tree removal. And then site planning regarding image update. So, so I, I, I think so will the commission. Maybe the best thing to do would be to take each one of these separately. And even though we've been discussing all three of them, and, and see, you know, if we can get a motion on this. And again, we're, we're making our recommendation to council. But let's see if any of the commissioners have any more, more comments on the tree analysis. While you guys are still thinking about it, I, I will weigh in. I, I completely agree with Vice Chair Janoff. I also live in the hillsides and, you know, I, I haven't seen a lot of people cutting down trees because we haven't had a whole lot of building. We don't have available lots in our neighborhood, but I, I, and after we've heard so many of these hearings in the hillsides, I think people are highly incented to improve their view. And so we should take the most conservative view and, on what could possibly be included in the visibility analysis, because it probably won't be there. So is there anyone that could make a motion? Vice Chair Janoff, do you feel comfortable making a motion?
I, I do. I'm just not, I'm not entirely sure what my motion would be. I'm just I guess the more conservative point of view is, I, I can't tell whether it's Mayor Spector's or Mayor, Vice, Vice Mayor Spector or Eric Jensen's view. But I would, I would recommend that the, that the language be conservative in that we could expect all non-native trees that are not proposed to be removed could, could and probably will be removed, and they should not be included in the visibility study. I'm on the, with regard to the native trees, I think any tree that is under, I think it's the nine inch diameter, shouldn't be included either, because if they can be removed, then they probably will be removed. Hope that's clear.
I think that's pretty darn clear. So Commissioner Burge had her hand up, and then Commissioner Tavanna?
I was going to second the motion.
Oh, so you? Same here, I seconded.
Okay. All right, so we'll, we'll say Commissioner Tavanna seconded it. So, so, so we'll take Vice Chair Janoff's motion on the matter, which was to exclude the trees that were non-native, that were, don't require a permit, as well as any of the native trees that are under the diameter where they wouldn't require a permit for removal as well. Yes? Yes. And so, so are, is there any further discussion on that? Okay, so then I will, I will go ahead and take the roll call vote, and I will start with Commissioner Badami?
Yes.
Commissioner Tavanna?
Yes.
Commissioner Burge?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudes?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnett?
Yes.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Danoff?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So that passes unanimously. So that's basically one motion that covers, just to make sure I've, I've got this right, though, that covers B, C, and D?
No, just C.
Just C. Okay, all right. So I just want to make sure we're, okay, so we still need to worry about B and D, right?
Yeah, and I'm prepared to make a motion on those as well.
Well, I think that would just through the chair. Well, I think, I would just through the chair, I would say your, your motion on C kind of covers B, because we wouldn't include any of those anyway, because they're non-native. And it's an additional requirement to not include any natives that are less than a certain diameter. And, and the zone language is really, again, where they're going to be trimming up vegetation and separating vegetation canopies. So, you know, they're going to have to do that anyway, but if you want to make a specific motion on B, that's fine as well.
I don't know what you think of Vice Chair Jennifer, but I, I think, I think we're covered on B, given what Staff said.
That's fine, I'm okay with that.
Alright, and then with D, I'm trying to remember what.
D is the update on the graphic in the.
In the graphics, yeah, 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 okay. So are there thoughts on that one, what, what, what's the commission's thoughts on the recommendation? Commissioner Barnett?
I don't see any reason not to update the graphic.
Yeah, I think I agree with that. Other commissioners having any thoughts on that one? It seems pretty straightforward. Okay, so can we get a motion on that one? Maybe Commissioner Barnett or Commissioner Birch has their hand up.
I was just going to make the motion to approve the update of the image.
Okay, Commissioner Hetus.
I would second the motion and just make a comment that this is, you know, we're balancing the interests of the town and visibility with safety and wildfire safety. And I think it's always important to err on the side of safety, especially in the environment that we're in. And so I, I believe all of this are useful changes for, for that reason. And I think we need to continue to look at wildfire safety improvements that we can make whenever we can.
Well said, Commissioner Hetus, okay, so we have a motion and we have a second. Any other comments by commissioners? So I'll go ahead with the roll call vote, Commissioner Badami?
Yes.
Commissioner Tavanna?
Yes.
Commissioner Birch?
Yes.
Commissioner Hetus?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnett?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jennifer?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, alright, so we've got A, B, C, D, and so we still have E. So E is, is about the project review and, and if the application is, is under the, is over the visibility thing, and they, visibility requirement of 24.5%. And they are required in our hillside design guidelines to reduce the height to 18 feet. And so the question is whether or not the Development Review Committee could be the deciding body instead of the Planning Commission. And if I interpreted the comments from the House Policy Committee accurately, the Vice Mayor Specter said that there could be other issues besides, besides just the visibility that might affect whether or not it could, is approvable or not, so she was recommended to stay, keep it with the Planning Commission. And the mayor felt the other way, that we should move it down to the Development Review Committee so that applicants wouldn't have to spend as much money and could get their, their approval streamlined. So are there thoughts on that from the commission? Commissioner Badami?
I would be in favor of keeping the review process within the purview of the Planning Commission rather than the DRC due to other extenuating circumstances that might revolve around the approval or denial.
Other comments, Commissioner Hetus?
Yeah, I would agree, and, you know, I, I generally believe in streamlining, particularly when it comes to things that relate to the economic vitality of the town. When it comes to the hillsides, I don't think that streamlining in general yields good results. And I think there were, were reasons why we enacted the hillside design standards and guidelines and the decision-making bodies for them. And I think the Planning Commission is more familiar with some of the details of the analysis as well. And so I, I would be in support of keeping it with the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Birch.
Um, well, I want to ask a couple of questions of Staff about it. So I would assume if this is being reviewed internally, that the application would be meeting, as it said, far visibility, height, privacy concerns, the reflectivity of the materials, including any of these updates that we're proposing as far as the visibility around what trees would remain or not. Is that a correct assumption?
So I, I can jump in. So, yes, all of those things get analyzed, I think the other is, you know, understanding that the policy committee, potentially the Planning Commission and the council, we're going to make the modifications we already talked about. That means there are going to be far more homes that are visible. So you're going to have homes that may or may not be visible from reality when they're built five years, 10 years, or they could be visible right away. And so you're going to have a lot more homes of that nature that will be paying an additional $4,000 approximately, and adding an additional six weeks approximately to their application timing to go to the Planning Commission. So, but either way, where Staff's comfortable, either way, bringing it forward to the commission, it's just really something to help, as mentioned, for streamlining for applicants.
May I just?
Go ahead.
Quick follow-up, and then I'll. So should the application come to DRC, and they've, you know, they've checked all the boxes, would it, would it potentially be something that you would still, though, bring to the commission, should there be perhaps a lot of opposition by neighbors or somebody else who felt impacted by the property?
So we don't generally have a a vote to see how many people like or dislike the project, we're looking at it objectively based on our standards. Obviously, DRC is appealable, you're going to be seeing a lot more appeals than you, and you have seen a lot more appeals, and so we're, we're going to be processing it from that standpoint. If they're a major exception, or some two that, you know, after trying to work with applicants and neighbors, because generally what happens is we have the applicant work with the neighbor, if it's a privacy issue, try to come up with a solution. You know, 75% of the time, they come up with a solution, 25%, they don't. And then the, the process is that someone has to appeal whatever decision that is. So, you know, generally, that's the, the course of action.
So that was the answer that I was, I was hoping that, that you would say. And so based on that, I feel like with the conversations that we're having right now, and the careful work that so many people have done in the last few years around really defining what requirements need to be met in the hillside as far as visibility and, and, and materials and so forth. Setting those type of parameters in place. Staff, we are streamlining these things, and we aren't holding up a potential homeowner additional months and additional fees home that theoretically meets all the requirements. And again, based on what Mr. Paulson just stated, if there are issues with potential neighbors, they will appeal it, and it would come to us. So I feel like all the work that's been happening is to help streamline these processes and make some things in the town a bit easier for our residents. There are still things in place to make sure that somebody doesn't build a four-story glaringly white home in the hills that's visible from everywhere. So I, I think it, to me, I feel very safe thing to say, let's continue down that streamlining process.
Okay, thank you, do other commissioners have comments? Commissioner Barnett?
Mr. Paulson, how often do you get neighbors appearing at the DRC?
We have neighbors at almost every DRC right now. Obviously, we're in different times, so people have a lot more opportunity, because they're already on Zoom all day long, so what's one more Zoom meeting? So, so we do, we, we have had a lot more participation at DRC meetings, and like I said, it's, it gets to be challenging because we're looking at it from a technical perspective and, and people's, you know, views or privacy. Those are important issues, we just don't have any objective standards, and if they meet those technical requirements, you know, we're trying to look for solutions and try to get the applicants to work with adjacent neighbors, but sometimes they just can't come to a compromise. And then again, that's where a project gets appealed. I don't have any objective numbers for you as far as what that looks like, but I'll definitely have Staff look into that over the last, you know, six months. How many agenda items have we had, and how many folks have participated on any one of those agenda items?
That's helpful to know, thank you.
Commissioner, Commissioner Hetus?
Yeah, I'm definitely respectful of the other commissioners' points. However, I don't think that streamlining in the hillsides is a valuable thing for the town as a whole. And we have to balance the, you know, the needs and requirements of the, the hillside homeowner with the needs and requirements of the town. And we're not always going to be in a situation where residents can attend DRC meetings. And we've had glitches with notification and other things at times. And our hillsides are finite in terms of, you know, what they are and, and what is built on them. And I think that we're really not talking about lengthening the time, we're talking about staying with the existing timeframe. So I don't really think that it's, you know, necessarily making it more difficult, I think we're just saying, let's, let's stand by what people have put together to protect our hillsides. And that includes a, a hearing process with the Planning Commission, which is, you know, I think well-equipped to balance the interests of the community and the homeowner. And that's the hard, it's hard work, and I know the DRC does a very good job as well, but I also think that we need additional prudent checks and balances on, on the, on our hillsides and what gets put on them. And particularly when they are visible, we need to, we need to really pay attention to that.
Commissioner Badami?
So I would like to add that hillside homes, they're a greater distance apart, so they have a greater propensity to be seen, but for residents not to know, not to receive notice, so they wouldn't receive notice to even go to a DRC hearing to possibly object. So I'm still going to stick with Planning Commission purview on this one.
Thank you for your comments. I, I'm going to weigh in and say that I, I, with all due respect, we have a lot of good things that have happened with the hillside design guidelines, but I can think of any number of times where, where we've had residences that were way more massive than they could be, and by changing the flow of their architecture or something like that, they could, they could change the dynamics of the visibility as well. And so I, I think it's not as simple as always just making it 18 feet, and having them comply with the other things, there's often ways that they could redo the design of the house or, or the situation of the house. And so I feel like it, in a case, in the case where the house is going to be visible, we should really be diligent about that. And, and so I side with Commissioner Hetus and, and others on that point. So that, Vice Chair Jennifer?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to say that I agree with that, and I think the, the notion that Staff is really limiting their decisions to objective criteria does mean that the more subjective or discretionary realm that the Planning Commission does have the opportunity to operate within doesn't, doesn't get addressed, and so I would be in favor of keeping the process the way it is with these applications coming to the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Any other commissioner want to make a comment on this? And if not, I would entertain a motion. Commissioner Badami?
I'll make a motion, so I moved to forward to Town Council a recommendation to retain project review and approval process with the Planning Commission.
For the homes that are visible, right?
Yes, for the homes that are visible.
Okay. Thank you, is there a second? Commissioner Hetus had his hand up?
Second.
Okay, and any further discussion? Seeing none, I will go with the roll call vote, Commissioner Badami?
Yes.
Commissioner Tavanna?
Yes.
Commissioner Birch?
No.
No, okay. Commissioner Hetus?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnett?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jennifer?
Yes.
And then I vote yes as well, so it passes six to one. And are there any appeal rights on this action? It's probably the same as the others, I'm asking Staff.
I'm talking, I just don't have my mic on. Yeah, there, there are no appeal rights for this, as it is a recommendation to the Town Council.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so then, you're ready to move on to other business, because we have finished that, it was, many items on the agenda. And so we have the, do we have a report from the Director of Community Development?
Thank you, I only have one item, I won't steal the Thursday thunder that you'll probably announce. But tomorrow night, we'll be having a community workshop regarding affordable housing, it's really just kind of a high-level look. Myself, Mr. Schultz, Ms. Pravetti, and we have a representative from West Valley Community Services also participating. So we'll be giving some general information to the public and answering questions, that meeting is tomorrow night at nine. We resume information is located on the town's website, and that's all I have for, for tonight, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Nine o'clock or seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock.
Thank you for the clarification. Okay, so then we move on to subcommittee reports. In addition to their service on the Planning Commission, members of the commission serve on several town committees. Do we have any reports tonight? The committees are Conceptual Development Advisory, Historic Preservation, and the General Plan Advisory Committee. So do we have a report from CDAC, I think not, probably, how about Historic Preservation? Since our, since our last meeting on the ninth of September? Okay, probably not, okay, well then I will comment on the General Plan Advisory Committee. So the General Plan Advisory Committee, as Director Paulson was suggesting, we're, we've been meeting, we've been meeting every, every two weeks, basically, and, and we had a very, very long meeting at our last meeting where we covered the, the mobility element as well as the hazards and safety element, but we did finish. And so this meeting we have coming up next is coming this Thursday, October 1st, and we'll be going over the, the public infrastructure and, and community services that go along with it. So that, that will be hopefully a shorter meeting, and then we have a very, very full agenda for the rest of the year. We're going to be debuting the first ever, we've not had this element before in the general plan as a result of the special meeting that we had on racial justice and, and the pandemic. Well, we, we have the pandemic and the hazards and safety element now, but the racial injustice is going to be a separate element in the general plan, and so we're going to be seeing that later in October, and then we'll be delving into land use and, and community design. So very, very busy, and I'm thankful and grateful to everyone that's on the General Plan Advisory Committee for all of their hard work. And I think that's it, so I will go on to Vice Chair Jennifer and Commissioner Hetus.
I, I think.
Okay. Commissioner Hetus?
Yes, I'm sorry, I was a little confused because of all the continuances, but there was a Historic Preservation Committee meeting on 23, and we provided preliminary feedback on 32 Walnut Avenue.
Okay. Thank you, I thought, I thought there was, and then we had to cancel our meeting last week, so. Thank you, I, I thought, I thought there was, and then we had to cancel our meeting last week, so, okay, thank you very much. And so then we will move on to commission matters, are there any matters that any commissioner wishes to discuss? Uh, Commissioner Hetus?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank, um, the chair and staff and the town attorney for keeping us on track on the issue of, uh, the North Forty, uh, parking, and keeping us on track in terms of, uh, objective standards that we are forced to apply in evaluating, uh, that, and I also wanted to apologize to the commission for not providing, that detailed spreadsheet in advance, but the questions that I got from, uh, answered from in the public hearing, required me to focus on certain cells within that spreadsheet that were not obvious before I started getting some answers to those questions. So again, I apologize for catching you off-guard with all of that.
Well, thank you very much, Commissioner Hetus, and, and thank you for all of the, um, thorough, um, analysis and research you've been doing all along. Okay, and, um, I, I did have one commission matter, I did, um, I just wanted to keep everyone in the commit, um, the commission up to date. As you remember, um, at, at our last meeting, we did vote to establish a subcommittee to help work on, um, identifying areas where we might possibly have objective sta, more objective standards, starting with the general plan and also in some of our other land use documents, and so I'm happy to announce that, um, that we've, we've, uh, found three commissioners that are willing to take this on, Commissioner Hetus, Commissioner Barnett, and Commissioner Birch have all agreed to help out, and I think they're all superbly qualified to do that, and, um, hopefully they'll be able to get started talking through things soon, and, um, and then they of course have, um, the supportive staff through this process, and I, I understand staff will also be hiring a consultant, so, so this, this should be great, and hopefully make all of our lives easier if we can find some more objective standards that we can use in our future land use decisions. So, I think that is everything, so I thank you all for your service, um, to the commission, and I will tell you that, um, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.